Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, City of Calabasas Regular Council Meeting. I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Krouse, Councilmember Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as our city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication. When you are called to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by our planner, Jacqueline Rackerby.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everyone place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to move on to the Sheriff's Crime Report from February two thousand and twenty-four. Deputy Di Matteo is here to present the report.
Good evening. Yeah, I am Deputy Di Matteo of the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, and I will be presenting the crime report for the month of February. In this report, there are forty-four Part One crimes, mostly made up of theft. There was one armed robbery that happened on February nineteenth at eight P. M. in the Commons parking lot. A Glendale resident sitting in his vehicle when he was approached by two suspects who robbed him at gunpoint. Items taken were wristwatches worth a total of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. This incident is being investigated by the Sheriff's Major Crimes Bureau. We did have two assaults, which were domestic violence-related. We had five residential burglaries and five commercial burglaries. There were ten incidents of grand theft, three vehicle burglaries, seven thefts from unlocked vehicles, an additional eight petty thefts, and then three stolen cars. If you notice, the noteworthy incidents don't have much on now. We are still waiting a crime analyst to get that information filled. But I have -- this information has been relayed to our detective lieutenant that this section should be filled with notable -- noteworthy incidents such as arrests made pertaining to investigations. So the stuff here, not much to look at, but in the future, hopefully, we'll have some better things. That's it. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Do you want to just share the update on the mountain bikes and patrolling those?
Yes. So, yeah, residential burglaries are a problem, and these criminals are accessing open space to access residents' backyards. So to combat that, we have started a mountain bike program, and that will be headed by me. So I will be -- I've already gone out there. We've done some test runs to see what trails we can ride and cannot ride, and we were pretty successful. So we will be out on the trails in your community, in your backyards, on the trails and golf courses and stuff during dinnertime hours, looking for these individuals responsible for residential burglaries. That's on top of burglary teams that we have and coupled with all the new technology that's out there. So -- and partnering with private security and flying a drone. So we've got a lot of good stuff going on right now, and any more questions pertaining to that?
Of course.
Great report. Thank you for coming always. Something a little close to my neighborhood, Greater Mowood, there was a car that was going down Paul Revere as it went down to Meadowlark, as it made the curve there, went through the hedges, and looked like it snapped the hydrant.
Nice.
I was just curious if there was a reason for that. Was it driver impairment, laziness? It's not -- it's a difficult curve, but it's a little odd. Someone could have run right into the house. I was just --
So I don't --
A lot of people have asked me.
Yeah. So pertaining to that specific incident, I don't know. I don't know what came of that. I'll get that report, though, and I can fill you in.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at residential burglaries, and that's probably one of the -- well, that's one, if not the most significant concern in our community. It looks to me like if we continue along this path, we're going to have a record number this year. And the strong arm -- or the armed robbery is also of concern, of course. I know that you're down an analyst, but I really would hope that somebody can fill out this page because it -- obviously, a loss of fifty-seven hundred dollars in a retail theft is important, but I think the public is probably more concerned with prioritizing synopsis of the armed robbery and the residential burglaries.
I agree.
So if someone's going to take the time to write out about the retail theft, I'd rather have the other stuff because so far, if I'm remembering right, we don't have any real paragraphs that have been written about our residential burglaries, and we've had, you know, twelve so far this year. So hopefully, that can be done even -- because it's been a while. When was this analyst position vacant?
At the end of last year, I believe. I know that there is analysts in background still. So it was brought up today. It was discussed today, so hopefully, we get one soon.
Well, hopefully, somebody -- even if you don't get one soon, maybe hopefully, somebody can, you know, actually just write a couple of paragraphs about each one.
I agree.
Or just a sentence or two about each one. That would be my only -- those are my comments.
Yeah, I agree. And that was discussed today, the importance of residential burglaries and other things like organized retail theft and investigations leading up to an arrest or identifying suspects responsible. So that's been an emphasis to put in that section. So I am gearing towards that happening in reports in the future.
Okay. Peter or David, do you have anything?
Just real quick again, and it's already been said, residential burglary and commercial are the main two. I'm very excited that you're going to be out there patrolling the area, among others, on the bikes. That's great to hear, great news. And just want to reiterate something that's in the report, and you talk about it often. Unlocked vehicle thefts are by far and away the biggest, largest when it comes to vehicle thefts, as opposed to the minor amount, at least even though any theft is too much. But if you -- again, lock your vehicles, lock your windows, lock your doors to thwart any potential activity of theft that you can, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That can go a long way in saving you from being a victim. Just lock your cars and also keep your valuables out of plain view.
Thank you very much, and thank everybody at the station for keeping us all safe.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have two speaker cards.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I have two speaker cards. First, I'll call up Brian Cameron. Oh, wait, is this for an item? Never mind. This is for an item. Okay, I will call up Mark Levinson. No, no, no. Yeah.
I think that entry was for speakers cards on the Sheriff's Crime Report.
Okay, sorry. Yes, it was.
I was just thinking from a general public comment.
Sorry, actually, I'm not there yet. Sorry, I went a little out of order. Mark, I'm going to call you back in one second.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, no speaker cards regarding the Sheriff's report. Now, we're going to go on to council announcements. Peter?
Let's see, I just want to announce that coming up in about two weeks here, we have Earth Day. We're going to be having an Earth Day Festival down at the Los Virginus Creek at Agora Road. It's going to start at two o'clock and go till about five. Hopefully, the public can come out and join us.
Thank you. James?
I just want to thank everybody for showing up at the community center. We had our grand opening on March sixteenth, and a lot of members, as I understand it, over two thousand people showed up during that day to look at the community center. And if you haven't already been there to the new and improved Calabasas Community Center, please make a point of dropping by and taking a look at what it looks like. It's certainly been four years, and it looks marvelous inside.
Okay, thanks, James. David?
Thank you, and I'll echo James's sentiments. I want to give a big shout-out and congrats to all our staff who worked so hard and all those who worked so hard to help open up the community center, not once, but two times that week. Two great events, a lot of fun, and very exciting for our community. Also want to mention, following up on Peter's comment, the Mayor's Youth Council will be holding a -- helping a creek cleanup along with the city the same morning as Earth Day on April thirteenth, beginning at eight -- I want to say eight-thirty?
I want to say ten?
Ten?
Ten A. M.
Too early for the Mayor's Youth Council. Ten to eleven-thirty, I believe.
Ten to twelve?
Ten to twelve.
I'll get those numbers right. So April thirteenth, you can be there from ten in the morning all the way to the late afternoon and celebrate Earth Day. Also want to mention briefly, it's early, but -- and I'm sure Mark will talk about it -- May first this year, again, after a bit of an absence, we will celebrate Law Day, where lawyers in the community, in conjunction with the Calabasas Chamber, will be providing free legal services to anyone who wishes. And I'm sure he'll talk more about that. And last but not least, I wish -- want to wish everybody celebrating this weekend a happy Easter and only good things. Thank you.
Thanks. Ed?
Thank you. A couple of things. Very happy to attend last week the L.A. County Training Center Fire Camp with Mayor Weintraub, which I'm sure she'll talk a little bit about, too. It's an interesting camp that that day marked the conversion of that camp, which was a former Camp Gonzalez, which is juvenile detention center, to a job training facility. Graduates become certified with the skills and the designations to need it for fire careers. It's an amazing place. And then also, Assemblymember Jackie Irwin is hosting a Zoom for wildfire and disaster insurance. I think it's important for all of us want to see if we can understand our -- a little bit more about our premiums. It's an online town hall Thursday, April fourth. I'm sure that Michael's going to be posting it on the city website, and that is five-thirty to six-thirty. That's my reports.
Great, thanks. And I'll just follow up with what Ed said about the wildfire and disaster insurance online town hall. You'll need to RSVP. So there is a link, and it is posted on our city website. And then two quick things. A lot of residents have asked when Topanga Canyon is going to open, and there is no definitive date. They're still analyzing the landslide, and the word is that they will report an update after this weekend, after there is more rain. So as soon as we hear when Topanga's open, we will let everyone know. And then we're also providing updates on the city's social media about the 101 that will be closed heading west towards Agora in mid-April while they're working on the Wildlife Crossing. It'll be closed from midnight to five or six A. M., so we'll continue to keep the community updated. And I also wanted to say a huge thank you to staff for all of the work opening the community center. It truly blew everyone's expectations. I mean, I have just heard so much positive feedback, and it was really cute. This morning, I was actually walking, walking my dogs, and I saw someone who was at the event wearing his T-shirt. So, yeah, we passed each other on Mulholland, and I commented. So people are so proud of the facility already. So great work to everyone. And there are no other announcements. Now, I'm going to go to public comment. So now, I'm going to call up Mark.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you very much. Mark Levinson, I live in Los Angeles. I'm the immediate past Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. We have some great events coming up. Councilman Shapiro just mentioned Law Day. I'll expand a little bit about it. We have various lawyers who volunteer their time in different fields of expertise, and if your question is one of family law or criminal law, we have somebody that will talk to you for free, give you some advice. We're not your attorney. We ask you to sign a form indicating that, but we're there to answer your questions, and it's really a public service. Each person will have at least an hour with an attorney, private time that costs you money if you do that. It's going to be at the library this year. I believe it starts around ten o'clock. There'll be individuals sign up. You can sign up early. There's always some openings. If you want to come in, just call, and we'll make arrangements for someone with expertise to speak with you. It's an event that came back after COVID, so we're very excited that it's coming back. The next thing on my list is the Cal Cup, which is a bowling tournament for which the city, we acknowledge, was runner-ups last year. Good luck this year, gentlemen and ladies. But what it really does is, beside everyone having a great time and a lot of fun and eating a lot of food, it raises money for scholarships. The Chamber donates all the profits to the schools for scholarships, and that's a great feel-good event for us as far as everybody also having a good time. And then our wine tasting event is coming up May seventeen, and it's going to be at the Civic Center again, a chance to sample different wines, meet people in the community, meet new people, and it's been a very successful event every year. And then, just before I close, I want to congratulate Councilman Ed Albrecht, a hole-in-one golfer. And Ed, congratulations. Never happened to me, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Cameron.
Mayor Weintraub, Councilmember, thank you very much. I promised to be brief. The -- I'm pleased to announce that emergency preparedness in Calabasas smartphone application is now available to download. This free app is designed to provide Calabasas residents with critical information on what to do before, during, and after wildfire, earthquake, or mudslides. This information will be stored in your phone's memory in order to be available even if telephone power and cell coverage is down. To download this valuable app, go to Epic space Calabasas in the Apple Store or in Google Play. And it's -- we've spent the better part of the last two years putting this together, and we're very proud of it, and it's a game changer. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you to everyone who's made such tremendous progress with Epic. We all really appreciate it. Now, we're moving on to consent items. Does anyone want to pull any of the items?
I just had a couple of quick questions on item three, please.
Okay, three. Ed? Okay, two and three. And I had a question on two as well. So let's go to item number two. Ed?
Okay, item number two, number eight. And first, I'd like to say, I think that --
Oh, wait, I don't know if the mic is on.
Okay, I'd like to say there was a great job. This is really a great job, very thorough, and it made this easy for everyone. But item number eight, to me, I think it needs a little clarification. It seems a little vague. The mayor or two council members may place an item on a future city council agenda. Future items shall be agendized within ninety days. Now, I know we have -- and we all know, we have a ton of future agenda items. So if it's going to be agendized in ninety days, how are we going to -- how does the turnover rate work with this? It just seems we have so many items ahead of it, I'm not sure if ninety days is sufficient or practical.
Can you restate which part you're looking at? I know I can't find it here, but I know what you're talking about.
It's a prior recommendation on mayor's.
I can respond to that. That's the language of the original protocols that we started with, and with the feedback of the council, when we had reviewed these items in open session, there was not consensus to change it, so we left it the way it was.
Okay, so I'm reading -- well, it said updated recommendations.
And the language matches the prior -- the prior recommendation was to take out the word "the mayor" so that two council members were required, whether it was the mayor and another council member or two council members, and that was not accepted. The consensus was not to approve that, so we went back to the original language, which is the mayor or two council members.
And my point is the next sentence. Future items shall be agendized within ninety days.
And again, that was not discussed at our last meeting, so we left that exactly the way it was written in the original protocols.
Okay, I think I had the same question last time. But okay, majority rules.
And then, did you have a question? My question was, the protocols go into effect next year?
Oh, now.
What?
I would assume now.
Well, I thought Peter had said we'll do it next year.
If, if we had made other changes.
I proposed that, but there was no interest in doing that, and we didn't make any substantive changes for that.
Got it.
Like, that was if the mayor's letter stopped and all that thing, but we didn't change it, so it didn't need to do that.
Okay, that was my question. But I think everything -- I went through it on the computer, because here you can't see what's blue and yellow. So I think everything looked pretty clean. The only question I had was, hold on, what number? Where's the social media part? What number? Oh, number campaign reform?
So the campaign reform, that -- two of those three items were not agreed to in consensus, so the only item that was was item number one. We agreed to take out the words activities of the mayor's youth council, so it'd be outreach or election-related activities. We did agree on that language, and because there was only one item left under campaign reform, we moved that to the mayor's role and took it -- didn't add a whole section titled campaign reform. We just moved that one item that was approved.
So I'm so sorry, items number two and three are gone?
Are gone.
Got it. Okay, it just wasn't -- I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Let's see, someone had a question on three?
Yes, just a couple of quick questions on item three, and these came from the public, so I'd at least like to ask them publicly. I think they're real simple explanations, hopefully. First question is to explain, the American Heritage bid was approximately twenty-three thousand less, but they were disqualified. Could you explain, please, what that means?
They were disqualified because they didn't provide all of the documents, and they did not fill out the entire proposal packet.
Okay. And then the second was an explanation of why it's a five-year agreement versus a one, two, or three-year agreement.
That was requested by the Board of Directors on behalf of the community.
Is that -- was that the Board of Directors for C.P.H.A., if I can ask?
No, for clairage.
Clairage, right.
This is for clairage.
Okay.
It was their request. They had the option of a three or a five when we had our meeting, and they asked for a five.
Great, those were the two and a half questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any speaker cards. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on the consent items? Okay, may I have a motion to approve consent items number one through four?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, now we'll move on to new business. Item number five, which is council, community, and staff priorities and future budget expenditures. Our city manager will introduce the item, and Richard Bernard from FM Three will follow.
Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to address these items. This is something that we have been talking about at the staff level for some time and also have been in communication at these meetings and in our budget committee as we look at fiscal resiliency, which is one of our strategic priorities, putting the city in a position where we achieve that fiscal resiliency for the long term. Tonight, I'm going to go through a very brief presentation. There's more -- a lot more information in your packet, and more than anything, my presentation is meant to lead into further information from Richard Bernard with FM Three Research. So let me start with mine. As we've discussed in previous meetings, the budget is a policy document by the city. This allows the council to, through their communication with the residents, with stakeholders and others, to identify those priorities that are of concern or of greatest importance to our residents, and then budget accordingly for those. As presented in your staff report, I included an attachment, Attachment A, that itemizes potential expenditures over the next five years. This is not an exhaustive list. This is not a complete list. Really what this is, is for illustrative purposes, and is based on different topics that have come up either in these meetings, our strategic planning, commission meetings, or I'm sorry, our committee meetings at the lower level with the two council members. And you have that itemized list. Here, what you have is a summary. So again, the city is not bound to any or all of these. This is, again, just topics that have come up, whether they're projects, initiatives, programs, services that might be included in future budget years. And we've put those into the four different categories here. I've summarized the totals. So if we look going forward, public safety, if we were to do everything on that list is about eleven-point-eight million dollars over the next five years. Maintenance of our parks and recreational facilities, and then also maintaining and improving and enhancing our community and teen events, just about ten million dollars over the next five years. Streets, sidewalks, medians, and public works projects, just over fourteen million. And then just general other city operations is about nine million. So those, again, are broad categories. We won't go into discussion on Attachment A tonight. It really is, again, for a starter to add to, and we hope that as you think of other things or as you are in communication with residents, that you send me, please, an email that we may have -- if there's something that we may have missed. And as the budget committee meets over these next couple of months, we'll be looking at that list and presenting back to the council some of those items that we would be recommending for this next fiscal year. With that, as council is aware, our major fund revenues, our general fund revenues, are really done through six different revenue sources. Our sales tax, property tax, our utility user taxes, our transient occupancy tax, and then our vehicle license fees. A vehicle license fees is a little bit of a misnomer. It's really based on growth in property taxes, and it's a direct allocation from the state, but it still is named vehicle license fees based on previous sources of those funds. Again, those are the biggest revenue sources for each of our budgets, and as the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Shapiro understand, we look at those budget revenues. In fact, we met today as a budget committee and looked at those and are starting to look at the next budget cycle and forecasting where we see these major revenues coming in for twenty-four, twenty-five. Now, on the flip side of every budget are the expenses. What can we actually afford? What can we put into those budgets, and what are the services we can provide? This council and our budget committee have been very clear in that, as we've discussed this in previous meetings and in our budget committees, that any time that there's something added, we also need to look at where we might be able to find some savings in our budget. And as the council is aware, last fiscal year, or this current fiscal year, the last budget cycle, as we looked at that, as the executive team met and we took the direction of the council, we were able to identify about three-and-a-half percent general fund savings overall that we were able to put together. And so our current budget represents that commitment to hearing from the council to look for where we can trim, and at the same time, we'll be looking at sharply at the expenses going forward of this next budget cycle. I want to talk just briefly about two of our revenue sources, our transient occupancy tax and our sales tax. And with it, I'm going to turn that over to Ron to talk about transient occupancy tax, which is often referred to as a hotel tax or a bed tax, and then we'll talk about sales tax.
Thank you. Council, transient occupancy tax, as Kindon mentioned, is a hotel-bed tax for the City of Calabasas that is set at twelve percent, which for our surrounding region is about average for the cities going out to Camarillo and down to Santa Monica and Malibu. Our rate of twelve percent generates two million six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in this current fiscal year. If the council would ask the citizens to vote on an increase in the transient occupancy tax, each one percent increase would generate an additional two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So if we would raise the rate to thirteen percent, that would be an extra two-hundred So if we would raise the rate to 13%, that would be an extra 220. If we would raise it to 14, that would be an extra 440, or to raise it to 15 would be 660. 15% seems to be the highest rate in this neighboring cities. That's the city of Santa Monica and the city of Malibu are the only two cities that are at 15%. We turn to the next slide for sales tax. Currently, the sales tax in the city of Calabasas is 9.5%. And here is a breakdown of where those dollars go. 3.9% goes directly to the state, or about 25.5 million dollars. The city receives 1% out of that 9.5, so that's 7.5 million dollars this year. And then the county, through various voter initiatives that, that have passed over the years, the county actually gen, receives 4.5% out of the 9.5%. So they receive almost half of the sales tax revenue generated, or $34 million in sales tax in a year. So you can see the people that are paying the sales tax within the city of Calabasas, whether that be a business or a resident, they pay $71 million in sales taxes in a year, and the city itself receives about 7.5 million. So this is just a comparison of where the money actually flows to and to which government agency actually receives, receives the money. The next slide is a sales tax, transaction, and use tax. So we have our 1%, which is our general transaction and use tax. But if we would do a sales tax add-on, we would have to make a decision, or the council would make a decision to say, is that a general tax? Meaning it can support any governmental service, whether that be public safety, in our case sheriff, and/or would go for other services, be it for parking services, or any government service that, that we provide, anything from planning and building and safety to parks, to public works, anything so. And that general tax would be voted on by the citizens, and it would have to pass by a 50% plus one for, to be enacted. On the flip side of that is, is what is called a special tax. A special tax requires a 2/3 vote of the voters, and that special tax is earmarked or specifically designated for a purpose, whether that be public safety, or library, or parks, or whatever the, the council would so choose to make that a specific purpose. So those are the two designations that are available to the city council to propose to the voters on whether we enact a general tax or a special tax, and the, and the qualifications based on the, on the voting criteria of the voters on that special, on that election. Flipping on to the, to the next page, the Calabasas transaction tax estimates. If we would enact, if the voters would enact, I'll call it, a 3/4 cent sales tax, it is estimated to generate about $4.1 million annually. If we would enact, or the voters would enact, a 1/2% sales tax, it would generate approximately $2.7 million annually. So substantial dollars, substantial dollars to deal with what Kindon had talked about about seven slides ago, about additional expenses, additional services that the city would provide, whether that be in public safety, or in parks, or, or in public works, or what, what have you. And you see here an estimated breakdown of the different sales tax generators, whether that be autos or general consumer goods, restaurants or fuel stations, all the different designations of where the sales tax is actually applied.
Thank you, Ron. With that, I'd like to go back just real quickly to this slide here, again, about the, the community council staff priorities. And just before we turn the time over to Mr. Bernard with FM3 Research, just again, look at these numbers, and this goes back to the question. Why are we even looking or discussing potential new revenue sources? And I think it goes back to, really, the difficulty in trimming the budget. Even at 3.5%, let's say we were able to trim the budget another 3.5% with our, our general fund, that's just about 945,000. You double that, you're about 1.8 million. So if you look at the numbers of what we want to do, what we need to do, or what our community is asking, even if we trim or gut our budget, we're still looking at, if we add anything new, we're looking at these, these potential costs over the next five years. And so to do that, it has to be a combination of, again, being fiscally wise and prudent in our expenses, but also looking at new revenue sources. So with that, in, in February, the city contracted with FM3 Research to do some community engagement and outreach to understand the opinions of our, our voters and our residents. And so with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Richard Bernard to go over that data that he has been able to, to synthesize for us tonight. Let me see, we'll switch here.
All right. Good evening, mayor, mayor Protem, council members, staff. I want to thank you for inviting me to present the results of your community survey. In January of this year, between the 21st and the 28th, we conducted a dual-mode survey, which is a survey where a random portion of respondents take the survey online, and a random portion take the survey on telephone. And in fact, 51% took it on the phone and 49 online. We interviewed a random sample of 374 city of Calabasas registered voters who are likely to vote in a November 2024 election, based on their past voter history, or if they've recently registered to vote in the last little while, which implies that there's some interest in the upcoming election. We contacted them by telephone, email, and text, and for the full sample of 374, where we asked the certain questions of everyone, the margin there is plus or minus 5.2. I will remind you of that again as we go through the presentation. We were privileged to conduct a previous survey for the city in September of 2023. You may recall, as it related to cannabis, and there we interviewed a random sample of all registered voters, not just likely registered voters. As I go through the survey results, if you see something doesn't quite equal 100%, I, I attribute that to rounding. So I'd like to start giving you a little bit about the perceptions of the community. We began the survey as we did the previous survey in 2023, and asked your voters whether they thought things in the city were headed in the right direction, or if they felt things were off on the wrong track. The left-hand side is the September 23 numbers. They are all registered voters, again, your 2024 numbers in January are likely November 2024. And statistically, not much difference between the two groups over time. I had said then, at the time, that the fact that slightly more than one in every two voters have a favorable view of the direction, and that, in a sense, a ratio of two to one favorable to unfavorable, if you look at the wrong track, was a relatively positive number in this day and age, where comparatively, in other parts of Southern California, in some communities, the numbers are underwater in terms of right direction. The numbers, perhaps, had we done this eight or nine months ago, may have been a little bit better, and we're seeing a trend, a downward trend in many of the communities, not so in yours. The issues tend to surround when, when I do focus groups to ask them about those kinds of questions. They tend to center around the cost of living, particularly the cost of housing, though that may not be true entirely in every community, as well as the perception of crime, specifically property crime, of which clearly that is an issue in your community, as well as the issue of homelessness. And we'll see those, some information about that as we move forward. Before I get into the sales tax question, we like to ask a conceptual question. Do they even think that the city needs additional funds to provide the level of city services that residents need and want? You could see, again, in September of 2023, when we asked all registered voters, 40% said there was at least some need for additional funds, with a similar 38% saying a little or no real need. Fast forward a little bit to January 2024, and here you have 34% of likely November 2024 voters that perceive there is at least some need, and an extremely low percentage, only 7% perceive there is a great need. That number is very low for a potential sales tax, be it a general or even more so a dedicated. And if I look at the margin of error, and I consider, if you're interested in a, I, I want to be really clear, I'm not trying to get ahead of the council, but my charge was to look at the viability or the feasibility of a sales tax. So I'm, I would just say, I'm here to interpret the data, and I will always say to you, you're much smarter about your community than I am, but at least you'll have some data in which to use as an educational point in, in your deliberations. So having said that, if I use the margin of error of about approximately five, and I, I use the greater some need at 34, only about 39% at most think there is a great or some need. I often will attribute that to well-run cities, and I consider yours, based on the data that I look at, is perceived to be a well-run city. And in that case, people don't say, don't look and say, oh yeah, I can see where there's a lot of holes in this place, and I can see where they can use the money. And so I partly attribute that to you folks, in a, in a good way, but not necessarily a good way as it relates to potential sales tax. Now I want to move to the, I'll call it a hypothetical ballot title in summary, which was reviewed by your city attorney to ensure that it was a legal question. Again, I'm not trying to get ahead of you folks, but if I were to ask a question that your attorney then said, oh, we would never places on the ballot, I'm not doing you much of a service in terms of the interpretation. As you look at that question, I'm sure most of you will say, I will not win a, a Shakespearean prose award for ballot questions. But there are certain legal requirements that are required, and I, I incorporated that in here. And the point of the general purpose measure is at best to show illustrative examples of where the money could go, but ultimately goes into the general fund, and it's at the discretion of councils each year as to how they apportion those dollars. As your finance folks have told you, that 3/4 generates approximately $4 million, so that's where we got that number. So we read that question to them if they were on the phone, or they read it if they were online, and we said, if there were an election today, would you vote yes in favor or no to oppose? If they said they would vote yes in favor, we asked them, is that definitely or probably? Because we want to know the intensity of support, i.e., the percentage who say definitely yes. And if they said no, we asked them definitely or probably no, because we also want to know the intensity of the opposition, i.e., definitely no. And if they were undecided, we pushed them a little, we said, would you lean yes or would you lean no? If they said they'd lean yes, we put them in the yes camp, no in the no camp. And for this particular question, there were 6% of the respondents that said, I need more information, I'm undecided. So on the initial vote for this general purpose 50-plus-one measure, it was 56 yes, 38 no, 6% undecided. The definitely yes is about the lowest I ever want to see it. It's quite low for an initial vote, at 27%. The definitely no, I often see it at a floor of about 20%. I think this is definitely doable for a 50-plus-one measure. And if you use, again, that margin of error of around five, if everything went in the direction of the, of the measure, on the high end, it would go to be, it would be 61, and at the low end, it would be 51, and it would be a very long month as they counted votes to determine.
Moving the PowerPoint ahead.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry, sorry. I'm so sorry about that, thanks. So the, those, these are the votes, or the vote for the initial question. I wanted to show you one of the demographics. You may recall earlier in the presentation, I asked them if they even thought they needed, you needed additional funds to provide the level of city services that residents need and want. If they thought there was a greater some need, 79% would vote yes on this measure, on the initial vote. If they think there's a little or no real need, 56% would vote no. This suggests to me that education is really critical in telling your story, if that is your story of need. Otherwise, it will be Herculean task to get to a successful passage of even a general purpose measure. I'd now like to move to, we, we provided them a list of budget priorities, I'm going to show 26 items tonight. And this was part of the package of the survey where I'm simulating educational outreach to see if education really makes a difference. Because if it doesn't move the voters, going out and telling the same story is not really going to particularly help. So we gave them a list of 26 items, there'll be three slides on this, and, and we said to them, regardless of whether you support the measure or not, how important would it be to include this item in the measure? We provided them with the option of extremely important, which is the dark blue, very important, which is the mid-color blue. I've aggregated the extremely and very important on the right-hand side. The dullest of blues is somewhat important, and the orange is not too important, or I've combined it with the folks who said they didn't know. Couple of things I'd like to say before I talk about it as it relates to the measure. So of the 26 items, one of those items was in the 90s in terms of extremely or very important. Six were in the 80s, and nine were in the 70s. This analysis tells me that the council is very much in line with your voter community in terms of priority. There are a lot of cities, when I do this, this particular question, where the highest are in the 50s and the 60s. And you can really see a disconnect between the council and the community, and in this case, that is not, is not the case. The other thing I'd, I'd like to point out, if you choose at some later date, if you choose to deliberate, but it's not tonight, if you chose some other time to deliberate, or not to deliberate, to, to look at a potential measure, this, these three pages are invaluable for the budget process. We get very few opportunities to hear from the community in such a statistical manner to get a sense of what their priorities are. And that, I think, that's an important data point when you're making social and public policy, so, just an aside. So if you look at the first page, these are the highest priorities, and you'll note on this first page, all of them are public safety-related. By far, this is your, your residents' number-one priority. It includes preparing for and responding for wildfires, preventing property crimes, including thefts and burglaries, preventing responding to home break-ins. You see at the bottom of the slide, responding to smash-and-grab thefts, which I know from having read the clips in your city, there have been occurrences at the commons. And, and so those are kind of the priority items. My recommendation, based on the results, and you'll see more in a moment, is that a dedicated measure for solely public safety is not viable in the city. I think you would have a really tough time getting a 2/3 vote on, on a measure. But that having been said, on the second slide, you could see some other items which can be used as illustrative examples for money to go into the general fund, including repairing streets and potholes, protecting open space and natural areas, and addressing homelessness and maintaining parks, many of which I saw in the priorities of the council when the city manager presented them a moment ago. The last thing I'd like to say in terms of this list of three, three slides, is that you'll note at the bottom of the third, the third item at the bottom, you'll see maintaining city services. Here, 38% say extremely important to be included, with 70%, 7 and 10, saying extremely or very important. If I drop down to the last slide, the bottom item is improving city services. There, it's 21% extremely important, and 59% extremely or very important. So there's a significant differential in terms of 17 points on the extremely important between maintaining and improving, and a differential of 11 points in terms of extremely or very important. This tells me they are happy and they want you to maintain. This tells me they're happy and they want you to maintain the quality of life and the services that you provide. It doesn't mean they don't want improvements, but that's not their major theme in looking at this particular measure. I'd now like to move to some educational statements. We provided them with a number of educational statements, and after each one, we asked them, would this make you, having heard this, would this make you more inclined to vote yes on the measure? Now, as you know, the city could not, nor could you on city time or with resources advocate, but you can educate. On your own time, you can do whatever, of course, you would like. So for each question, when we said, would that make you more inclined, if they said that it would, we asked them, is that much more inclined, which is the dark blue, or somewhat more inclined, which is the bright blue? And I've aggregated the total more inclined and ranked it as such on the right-hand side. And this, this particular series of slides tells me that you have an interesting and strong story to tell, because these numbers are particularly strong, particularly among the much more inclined, that intensity, once they hear something, they say yes. You'll note that there are words and parentheses before each of those statements, they were not read to them, nor did they read it if they were online, this is simply the theme of the message, so I don't have to sit here, nor do you have to watch me read seven messages to you. But clearly, there are a number of reasons why people would support a measure if you chose to move forward, asking them whether they would support it or not. The issue of local control is a strong one. Currently, you're receiving a mere pittance back from the sales taxes that you are giving to the county. Certainly, a well-run city, if it's maintained as such, will ensure strong property values. And then there were two statements that we split related to crime, one on this slide that talks about reducing crime, and another one about the details of the amount of crime activity in terms of burglaries, robberies, and thefts, which you could see on the second page. Both of them had among the strongest intensity, i.e., much more inclined to vote yes. And then there was a wildfire message that also scored quite well. So after we simulate potential outreach, we re-asked the ballot question that you saw earlier. On the left-hand side was the initial vote, which was just after ballot title in summary, you saw this a moment ago, it was fifty-six, thirty-eight, yes, no. After telling them what the money could be used for, and some story about, you know, the needs in your community, support overall goes up six points above the margin of error, but more importantly, the definitely yes moves up to thirty-seven points, an increase of ten points. If I use that margin of error test, and I'm assuming things mostly go in the direction of the measure, on the high end, if I look at sixty-two on the yes side, on the high end, it's seventy-one percent, no, seventy-two percent, sorry, no, I'll start again, sixty-seven percent, and on the low end, it's fifty-seven percent. So above the margin of error and above the threshold needed for passage. I asked the city, and they approved for me to look at a half-cent as well, because if three-quarters was a little too rich for your community, I wanted to make sure that I had, I had an alternative for you to consider. So we said, what happens if it wasn't a half-cent, but it was, I'm sorry, a three-quarter cent, it was a half-cent, and we explained to them what the amount difference was in terms of how much each would generate, and we re-asked that ballot question. Support only went up two points, but the intensity, that definitely yes, moved up another eight points to forty-five percent, a really good place to be for a fifty-plus-one measure after education. So in conclusion, perceptions of the city, a slight, a slight majority perceive the city is headed in a right direction. We also asked, but I didn't present tonight, about favorable, unfavorables about local businesses and other organizations in the city. Local businesses, the city overall, and the council, the acorn, and the emergency preparedness in Calabasas, Epic, which we, the representative was here tonight, all scored high favorables of six and ten. At a time when you mentioned government, these numbers to be six and ten are very strong, and so they're happy with the city, they're happy with the government, and they're certainly very supportive of local businesses. With respect to the three-quarter cent, initial support was at fifty-six percent, though the definitely yes was kind of modest, slightly more than one quarter. After education, however, increased, the support increased six percentage points from fifty-six to sixty-two, above the margin of error for passage. Looking back at that half-cent, while I only asked it once, it was at your high, the measure's high-water mark of sixty-four percent in terms of support, with forty-five percent saying they would definitely vote yes. In reality, if they go to the voter booth, or if they fill out their absentee ballot at home, there is no negotiation, so I'm aware of that, but we wanted to see if maybe there's a decline, a sensitivity to that. I have seen that to be the case in a small number of cities, but most of the time, there is no difference. In your case, there's an interesting story to be told. I certainly have done work for the city of Malibu, where they passed a half-cent sales tax in 2022, though they chose not to test the three-quarter cent. And there are other cities that I have worked for where they wanted three-quarter cent, it's all in L.A., right, because that was the three-quarter cent everyone's trying to capture before someone else does. In the city, for example, of Torrance, the data suggested a half-cent, they went out and tried a three-quarter cent, they failed, they came back, we did another survey, the survey again showed that perhaps a half-cent would be better, they went that direction, and they were successful. So there are illustrative examples, and there are other cities where three-quarters seemed close, like in your city, and have been successful, such as the city of Lackinia out of Flintridge in March of this year. I mean, I know they're still counting ballots, but there's no way they are going to lose this one, there's not, there's no, there's not enough ballots left. So in terms of budget priorities, preparing for and responding to wildfires, preventing property crimes, maintaining 911 response, protecting open space, natural areas, addressing homelessness, and repairing streets and puddles are top priorities in your community. Statements related to local control, reducing crime, and protecting property values were leading reasons to support the measure. The measure with a strong outreach effort may be viable in November of 2024, assuming minimal opposition. You folks know the city better than I do, so you'll have to assess whether that, that might be the case. And a half-cent sales tax, rather than a three-quarter cent, may provide a few extra points, which may get you over the, the measure over the finish line if you choose to move forward, but at this point, I don't, I don't think you have to decide either way, I don't think that's what's being asked of you tonight. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you so much. I'll start with Mayor Protam Krah.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation, that was very informative, and I'm glad we've had a chance to share that here today. In the voter priorities, I did notice there was a lot of emphasis on safety and security. In the last survey you did for us for community services, though, there was also mention of events, local events, you know, city, I can't think of the word for it, community services, that wasn't in the voter priority, was that not asked, or was that just not a priority?
So would it mean, when you mean that, you mean like events, like the Fourth of July, those kinds of things?
Yes.
Yeah. My experience, because I do a lot of citizen resident satisfaction surveys, is that when it comes to, they're satisfied with it, but when you rank them in terms of importance, they score very low.
Okay.
So I think they're happy to have it, do they want to raise their taxes so that you can have a tree trimming event? They want to go to that tree trimming event, or the Hanukkah lighting, or whatever it is, but they don't really want to have to pay more taxes for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam, if I could add something as well? So over the last few months, we've had several presentations that have highlighted surveys. I think the survey that you may be referencing is, was done by Prose Consulting as part of the community services outreach, and so that was very targeted to community services, parks, recreational activities, therefore very focused on specific senior, teen, and community events, and so that data wasn't pulled into this, this research or this survey, but it is a very viable statistic, because it was very high in some of that out of their surveying, so thank you.
Thank you, that answers my question.
James?
I have, I have a few questions. Okay, tracking these things, and I forget, are you from L.A. County or outside? Okay, you're, you're probably aware, the last few cycles, there's a couple groups out there that actually have managed to oppose every single tax measure.
It's probably true in a lot of communities, but yes.
But they, but it's, it's one, it's apparently, there's a, there's a concerted effort now among some of these groups to make sure that there's an opposition filed, which had not been the case. So in light of that, on your education slides.
Yep.
Your education was pretty much our, like, you know, pro-city education or pro-tax education. What, did you measure at all what impact it would be if there were competing messages? And for example, a reasonably compelling argument were made to oppose?
I did, I did, and there, the support for the measure dropped. And so my, in my conclusion slides, and this is something that you would have to assess better than I do, if it was a well, if there was a well-funded opposition, not a letter in the acorn, not maybe one person coming up and saying something here, but if, if there were, there was a concerted effort to oppose this, I think it would be challenging.
Well, I don't know that you're going to get like a really well-funded, you know, well-conserved effort, but I'm just talking about a reasonable, like, someone files a ballot statement in opposition, which I think would be likely, someone, you know, there are a few letters in the acorn, there's chatter among some homeowners groups. What, do we have an idea? I mean, would it fall below fifty percent?
It definitely could, and I think there's, to your, to your question, I'm going to add on, to sort of make the point you're trying to make. As you may know, there's this new law called AB 1416 that would require that below the ballot question, and I was just in touch with L.A. County Legal Council today, they are not, not opting out of it for this November election. So below the ballot question, there will be a list of people who signed the supporter, supportive argument, if there is one, and then a list of opponents who have signed the opponent argument, if there is one, and so it will be front and center, and that is an additional factor that hasn't had, we haven't had to deal with in either for or against previously. So that adds a little bit to your question. I believe that, I believe that we, that, I'll recommend, and it will be your, it will be up to your discretion as to whether you think it's appropriate, that you go out and talk more to the community, you have a little bit of time, and also to tell your story, and then come back closer to the election, because there will be a generation of not only educational effort, but there will be people in your community that will start to hear about this and will stand up and oppose. And then come back and do a tracking survey, like most places do, to see if you've moved the needle to a point where you can sustain the kind of opposition you're considering. If you do nothing now, and there, and you just place something on the ballot, it will be a very dicey proposition, it would be a coin toss if there was some opposition, as you suggest, to placing it on the ballot. I hope that answers your question.
It does, it confirms what I thought, that this would be a very close contest, and I'm not sure what the outcome would be. I have one other area of questions, and that might be for the city attorney. So as I understand it, majority vote if you use it for general purposes, but, but don't target a specific purpose, and two-thirds if you say this is for, to buy additional police officers or something like that, correct?
Yeah, so for, you can list a set of purposes and general government services.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask.
And then you get majority vote.
Okay.
If you list a closed, defined list of purposes, so for parks, public safety, sheriff's contract, and that's a closed list, that's a special tax, two-thirds vote.
Okay.
So the ballot language that was tested would be listing all of those things and general city services is a lawful general tax with a fifty percent vote.
Okay, because that's what I saw on the ballot in all these other places recently, was a specific list, and so I was wondering how that played into it. So as long as you do the catch-all of and general services.
Correct.
So you're not bound to spend any equal amount, so you could just list all these things and general services, but you don't have to spend, as long as you do spend something in that area, or it's just as possible, right?
It's a list of things you can, it's because you've listed all of those and general city services, you can spend it on any lawful purpose.
So you could, if you really-
So legally, it can be spent on anything the city can legally do. The one caveat, of course, is if the community rallied around that list, it's often wise to spend it on that list to prevent somebody putting another measure on the ballot to repeal it.
Well, if you, but you don't have to spend it on every little thing in that list.
Correct.
Okay. The other thing is, I, and I wanted to get your, I'm pretty sure I'm correct in this, but I want to make sure, is this roundtable measure, business roundtable measure.
Yep.
As I understand it, if that's allowed to go through and passes, this whole thing would be off the table, like even if ours passed, because it post-dates 2022.
No, if the language that was tested complies with the CBRT measure, if it is, if the measure passes, this language will be legal, if we got fifty percent plus one.
But I thought included in there was you had to include other things like ending date.
We did, until the voters, until the voters decide otherwise. I don't know if we can-
Well, I thought the league, I mean, I don't want to get too much into the details, but I thought the league said you had to put, the league interpreted that as you had to put an actual date.
So I, we'll double-check on what the league's interpretation is, but as I look at it, this language is viable because until ended by the voters reflects the reality, the measure will be in place until the voters end it.
Okay, I'd like you to check that, because the league-
The league did speak, the league did speak to that, but enough other legal counsel who do this for a living on a daily basis, and some legal precedent has shown that that is considered illegal duration. I'm not a lawyer, but that's what every lawyer says to me, because I bring this up with every, with every city that I work with, because the league did speak to that.
Okay.
So it's a legal interpretation.
So, so the case in front of the state Supreme Court, which may take it off the ballot, is coming up soon, in March?
We don't have a date yet. So my partner, Michael Colton, who knows, is doing the weakest briefing for the league in that case, we don't have the date set yet, we're expecting it to be in Mar, in the end of this month, although that is this week, right, or in April, and then we'll have a decision by June. So we'll know by the end of June, June 27th to be precise, is the state ballot voting deadline, whether this is or is not on the state ballot.
Okay, but final, final question is, the language in that, as I understand it, says, if that passes by a higher percentage than our tax measure passes, then our tax measure doesn't go into effect.
No, that's not correct. So there's a competing, there's two things, there's the lawsuit that would pull it off the ballot entirely, if that wins, then the CBRT measure is dead. There's a second measure that the Assembly put on the ballot, the statewide ballot that is on the ballot, that requires the CBRT measure to pass by two-thirds of the state's voters, or it fails too. If that one is passed by the state's voters, then the CBRT measure has to pass by two-thirds, but the CBRT measure doesn't eliminate a general tax at fifty percent.
Okay, well, please keep us abreast of what state Supreme Court does.
Absolutely, absolutely, we're waiting.
That's, that's all my questions, thank you.
And Councilman, if I could add to that as well, on April 24th, we do have Jeff Kirin with the league, who will be presenting on that very issue, and our city attorney will be prepared with some of that additional information for that discussion.
Ed?
Thank you. Very interesting report, thank you, it's always nice to have personal comments after we've read it pretty thoroughly. It's such an important issue with this city, and I have one question before I go into my comments, and that is, as far as Malibu, and you mentioned another city that did have their taxes passed, was there opposition, as Councilman Buzagian mentioned, in those cases?
In the city of Torrance, the measure was not, I don't believe was placed on unanimously, so even within the council, there was opposition. In the city of Malibu, I am not certain, but I'm pretty sure you can find that out, because you have a relationship with that city. So I'm sorry, I just, I just don't know.
Okay. Well, my take on this is- Well, my take on this is, you know, it's interesting. The residents of this city pay close attention to the city council. And my experience over the years is they trust us. They trust that we vet what we're going to do, we research it, and we're doing what we truly believe as a group is in the best interest of the city. And public safety is certainly number one with us, and that is evident from what we've seen. But the narrative to present this when we bring it out is the component of education is really where it's all at. Because you have a flashpoint with someone. You're on the phone, you're emailing. It's only a few seconds, a few minutes at most, and their decision is made pretty rapidly. So, you want to separate a little bit from what tax increases mean in other areas, in other cities, and federally, and statewide, and otherwise, to a small municipality. As evidenced by, it was one of the, when we had the percentage list of what cities' residents didn't think was necessary on the city services. And the reason I see that it's so low is because they're happy with it. If it's great, you don't necessarily have to make it greater. So, the narrative is, I think, is really to explain our forecasting. And what we're forecasting, where the dilemma is going to be in the future with the city. And the reason why we want the taxes, it's not, yeah, we want public safety, but it's more comprehensive than that. But I'm not sure how to market that and package that in a short period of time. So, I think you've done a great job. But the focus on having them understand that they're not, maybe they're willing to certainly receive better services, but they're not willing to receive worse. Because we're already at a very good level, as evidenced by what they don't want to improve. So, that's going to be the trick. That's going to be the trick. It's the education. I like the idea of going out to the community. I think we'll all probably have to do that in our own way. But we've looked at all different opportunities to avoid this. And it seems bleak in the future unless we do this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. David?
Thank you very much for the report, all three of you, and especially this breakdown. Just a couple of quick questions because some of mine have already been answered. Out of the 374 individual voters who responded to this, do you have a breakdown of the ages of those?
I do. I do. Happy to share.
Please.
And this mirrors the ages of your likely November 2024 voters. That was very important. If I give you the wrong turnout model, it means absolutely nothing. So, 59% of the respondents were 50 years of age and older. And in a more subset of that, 31% are 65 years of age and older. So, you have comparatively to some other communities, an older generation. But we still had some young folks. We had 16% who were under 30.
I'm so sorry. Can you repeat? The 59% was how old?
Sure. 59% were 50-plus. So, therefore, the balance, the 41% are less than age 50. And if we looked at a subset, like an older group, 65-plus, they make up 31% of your likely voters. So, comparatively to some of the other cities in LA County, you have an older population.
And the younger, you were saying, under 30 was what percent?
Under 30 was 16%.
Okay. And the larger survey that we're talking about, the larger outreach and survey, what would that look like as far as numbers go in the public?
Well, that's something that I don't do, so I think Kendon is going to make an ask. So, maybe he'll tell you a little bit more in a moment.
I saw that in the report, so I thought I'd add. And then my last question probably goes to Kendon and our city attorney as well, to be careful. I certainly liked what was written up and the way it was written up as a potential ballot statement or information. Assuming we go forward down the road, assuming this passes, can we actually increase sheriffs, even if this passes? Because we've been told that can't happen until a certain time. So, I want to be very clear with the public and what we're doing as well, if we use those terms in there that we're going to increase sheriffs as opposed to safety measures such as patrol and possibly sheriffs.
Thank you, Councilman. That's an excellent question. And you're correct. At this point in time, there is a moratorium or a freeze on increasing service-level contracts for different jurisdictions. That will not be in place forever. And so, as we look to the future, over the next few years, as capacity grows within the sheriff's department and that there are more hires, that will be available to cities who want to increase sheriff presence on the streets. But that is correct.
And I'll just add, the phrase "increasing public safety protection" is broad enough to encompass both increasing the actual sheriff services, when we're able to, but also increasing the city's use of private security and of other technological and other crime prevention methods that are public safety protection but not direct sheriff's costs.
Right. I was referring to the pages after education critical statements, which talk specifically about, will help to provide funds to expand the number of sheriffs, and again, to, and sheriff patrols in neighborhoods. Those are specific, and people will read it as such. So, I want to be clear what we're doing and that we're being accurate. I thank you very much for this. I appreciate it, and I'll finish my questions there.
And then, Councilman, if I could just add to that is, most budgets are regressive budgets, no matter what. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. So, as we stand right now, we're looking at about a $200,000 increase to our sheriff contract, just a status quo. So, over the next five years, if we, and we know it's going, that's a 3.5% increase to the current budget. If we just project that out over the next five years, we're looking at $1 million more in our sheriff contract for just the status quo that we're receiving right now. So, again, whether or not there's an increase, even if, as Richard mentioned, our community wants us to maintain, so just being able to maintain status quo is an additional $1 million over the next five years.
Absolutely, and there'll be an increase of insurance.
Yeah.
In addition to that, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying be careful what we put out to the public that we are promising. That's all.
Thank you so much for the report. I also had questions about the makeup of the people surveyed, but that got answered. It was 334 people?
374 people.
And is that a normal sample size, given the size of our community?
Uh, yeah. I had hoped to get 350, to be honest. I got a little more.
Okay.
Free of charge. Yeah, you have 15,278 approximately likely November 2024 voters. Just to put it in context, if I was doing a survey for the state on a state measure, of which we do many, we'd interview 1,000 people. If I was doing LA County, maybe I'd do 800. So, you know, comparatively, I think it's a good number.
Okay. And then I, I'll ask my question, and then I'll say, and I don't know who, this question, I'm putting this out for multiple people. But do these measures have more success in a non-presidential election?
Do you want me to answer that first? Oh, yeah. The best scenario generally is a presidential election. It's the one with the biggest turnout, and typically, it's lower propensity voters. I'm just going to be descriptive. It's not a judgmental thing. Some more seniors, more fiscally conservative voters tend to vote in every election. Those that are younger, people of color, are more likely to vote, and Democrats are more likely to vote in a presidential election. Democrats are more likely to support these measures than Republicans are. These are just descriptives. They're not meant to be judgmental in any way. And so, this is a better election. I will point out, however, that the county is, the county itself isn't, but there is a public effort to potentially put a sales tax on the county ballot for homelessness. They have Measure H, as you know, so there, it would be a repeal of the current quarter cent and a total of half cent that might be on the November election. The good news is, unlike any other county, LA County, the smaller jurisdictions are higher in the ballot than the larger ones. Every other county, it's the reverse. And so, there may be competition. I don't want you to, you know, I want you to know all details when you make, you know, a concerted decision, if you're put in that position to do so, which is not tonight. So, I hope I answered some of your questions.
Thank you. And then my last comment is general. I think we made a mistake with, by not promoting this agenda item more to get initial feedback. I know we had the sample, but I don't think the general public beyond the 374 people surveyed really know that this item is being discussed tonight. And I think that was a mistake made on our behalf.
If I may comment, I think that's why Kendon is making the ask for you to go out and expand that conversation.
No, I know. I'm just saying that in our community, if we ask people their opinion, a lot of different groups in our community probably would have come tonight and had listened. This presentation was so detailed with such great information. I think we did a disservice by, I mean, hopefully, people are watching. But if they're not, I think we did a disservice by not really promoting this item and letting people know about the presentation.
Mayor, if I could address this, fair question, or fair statement. This is the first of many presentations like this, if the council wants to proceed. Again, as outlined in the staff report, the request is authorization to move forward with an allocation of funds to go out and do additional outreach, engagement, and community education, including an additional survey as we get closer to that June cycle. And so, this again would be the first of many to come as if the council is, wants to proceed with that education and that outreach. Much of this data would be shared at Rotary meetings with homeowners associations, wherever we might be going, again, under the council direction, to be able to share the data, but also the information about our budget priorities and where we see ourselves in the next five years.
Right. No, I appreciate that. I'm saying we could have done, like, step one tonight and had a bigger crowd. I think we've really, like, it came, was brought to my attention like midday today. And after hearing this, I just realized we should have really promoted this agenda item to have more people here. Like, this is a big deal and a great presentation, and I feel like we collectively missed the boat tonight.
Thank you. Understood.
If anyone else has anything to say or provide direction?
The only thing I would ask, I would say based on this excellent report is if the potential to go forward is only for a general, not a specific request. It wouldn't make sense, everything you've provided to us. And I would like to see and hear what the community has to say about this and seek further information. Certainly, this is, won't go any further than that at this point. That's all my comments are.
Peter?
Yeah, I would also agree. I think now's the time for additional outreach and engagement. And I would encourage us to approve some additional funding to make that happen, to make an additional push to the community and to follow up with an additional survey so that we can get some solid direction on which way the city wants us to go.
And James, do you?
Yes, I agree. I just, I think we need to hurry up on this because deadlines are coming up. Would not want to miss, I don't want to have to make it last-minute decision. I don't want to miss any deadlines, so.
Can you outline what the next steps would be?
Yes. So, overall, with the education and outreach, that would be a very active or proactive effort on staff and working with an outside consultant. We would develop material, again, that we would share at different, with different groups. After that, as we do that, there would be a series of discussions here at our council meetings in conjunction probably with our budget meetings. As we discuss the budget, those same evenings or paired with that, we'd have additional discussions on future funding. We'd have some forecasting bases, seeing where we're seeing, where we're seeing our revenues and our expenses trending over the next five years and so forth. With that, the end goal is the council would need to make a decision in June as to whether or not to put this on the ballot in November. And so, with that, what we would be looking at is a June 12th date. And let me explain why. There's a requirement, a legal requirement, that this is done at a regularly scheduled meeting. And it would, it has to be, again, approved by four-fifths of the council. So, four out of the five have to approve to put this ballot to the, this ballot initiative to the people. I think one of the things that Richard mentioned that is very important is your vote on this item is not to approve a sales tax. That's not what you're doing. Any vote on this item is authorizing it to be on the ballot so the voters can choose of whether or not to implement a sales tax initiative. That's a very clear distinction. So, you're putting on it a ballot to allow the residents, the voters, to make that choice. It is not whether you approve it or not in June.
I guess my question is, what would we review, what's going out to the public? Like, what, June's really close.
It is.
Like, say it's April. Like, how would we really do the robust public outreach that we would need? And when would that, and get the results back to us?
So, anticipating this, staff has already met with a consultant to have these conversations. And we'll be developing a packet of information for all of the council members and for staff. We haven't signed the contract because we wanted to wait for this meeting. But in the event that the council asks us to move forward, we're ready to move forward, and we'll have that, we've already had those one or two meetings with a consultant who are developing that material that we could share.
Right. But I'm saying, when would we see, like, the plan of action? Like, what HOA meetings, who's going, like, what the strategy is?
Yeah. And we'll develop a timeline with the consultant. That's one of the things that they're already developing. A timeline of what meetings would take place and where those meetings would be.
But will that come back to us to look at?
Not as, not as to approve as the, as a council. We'd be sharing that, and if the direction is, is that if you would like the Budget Committee, for example, to spearhead that, we could work closely with the Budget Committee on that.
Why the budget? No offense to Peter or David, why the Budget Committee?
It doesn't have to be. It could be a committee of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. It could be any committee.
And I'm not saying me. I was just curious. I'm worried about having not seen what the strategy is, and then something returning June 12th. And we're already having this big discussion, and we have three members of the public here.
We're not going to surprise you, Mayor. I promise that.
No, I'm feeling that we're going to surprise the public by the fact that we only have three people here tonight, and we're talking about something really big. That's my hesitation, that all of this has to be done so quickly.
Also, I'm not, I'm unclear on where the transient occupancy tax discussion went. Because you were talking more along the lines of a sales tax, weren't you?
Yes, my charge is never to test the TOT, so I can't speak to that.
So, I would expect the TOT to be prominent in our outreach because our residents generally aren't going to pay that, and those tend to fare better.
Sure, I can take that. This was something that we looked at as a Budget Committee. The only city in the area that has a 12% TOT like us is Agoura Hills. The only two that have higher would be 15% in Santa Monica and Malibu. Everybody else is lower. So, we're already pushing the upper threshold for a TOT. So, it's going to be a very difficult push, and it could result in less rooms sold, which would have a negative effect on total taxes. In addition, I think what the presentation here was meant to show is that an increase in TOT, even getting up as high as Malibu at 15%, would only generate $660,000, whereas a 3/4 cent sales tax would generate $4 million. And I think we've had many discussions here about the services that we want to provide, in particular, increasing our sheriff's contract, adding security, things like that. And we haven't been able to identify any major cuts to offset those additional expenses that we want. So, we're here today talking about what are our options. And the TOT, although it looks good, it's probably easier to get past the voters because only their in-laws are going to have to pay it. Unfortunately, it just doesn't generate the kind of revenue that we need to cover all the things that we want to do here.
Ed?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Councilman Kraut. It's really, the forecasting equation is very ominous looking into the future. And the future almost comes up too quickly when you're driving 60, 70 miles an hour with a budget. I am in favor of and support trying to put this together and getting it out to the community so we can hopefully get this on the ballot. I would urge staff, city manager, to recognize that probably one of the best beehives is going to be- one of the best beehives is going to be the homeowner association presidents, because most homeowner associations, including ours now, the Greater Millwood, have moved to bi-monthly, and we may be moving to quarterly. So, to get the ball rolling and get the feedback, we've got to jump on it right away, because those homeowner meetings need to be scheduled, and then the feedback to come back, there's going to be a lag. So, I would be the pedal to the metal on that. So, if I can be supportive in any way, I'm happy to do that.
Not to continue down this path, but I, had we done a notice to all of the HOAs and community groups tonight, it would have, we could have heard from people initially, because what if we heard from twenty HOAs, and they were like, we're completely, we have strong opposition to this? Like, I guess I'm asking, would that sway this conversation one way or another?
So, I think, you know, Dr. Bernard mentioned earlier on, you as a council know the community much better than anybody else from the outside, but it's a statistically valid survey of three hundred and seventy-five people, you've captured the opinion of your residents at this point, your likely voters. So, you could have twenty individuals come in at the podium and say they oppose this, but those twenty voices are very different than the fifty percent of the community that say they do.
Right.
And so, again, that's, it just, it's just going back to statistics and that number.
Right, but knowing the community, I know that if someone takes a phone call or does a survey online, it's very different when they start talking to their neighbor. Did you hear about this? This is what this really means. I'm just, I feel very nervous sitting up here, jumping into this, when we kind of like, we didn't use tonight as like a launching pad with the community. I don't know if any of the three community members that are here want to put in speaker cards, but that's just where I'm at, and I'm, so the count, the plan is, the council would not, the full council would not see the strategy of going out to the community?
The, the full council would see the strategy. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something that is approved by the council. It wouldn't be coming back to the council for discussion and approval. We'd be moving forward, you'd be aware of it.
And what's the, what's the cost?
So, the estimated cost that I put in the staff report is anywhere from about fifty-five to sixty-five thousand, but that includes both the consulting firm that would do the educational outreach, and also an additional survey, survey by FM3.
And then last question, possibly. When will the final results of the next survey come back to the council?
You'd have that before the June 12th date.
Well, I'm saying if, if we, if the, if we start hearing a lot about this, and the survey results come back saying, this is not going to pass, there would be no June 12th date. Right? I mean, we have to, like, make the decision.
We have to decide at a meeting.
But why would we?
We can't anticipate what the five of us are going to think.
Correct, but I'm saying, we have to say yes or no. Okay, wait, help me here. We're basically saying tonight that our, that on June, that on June 12th, we're going to put this question forward, for the council to decide if it would go on the ballot.
Correct.
Right.
Unless...
And that was my question earlier. Like, I'm not comfortable with that.
Unless, unless we see from the polling results that it's changed dramatically, before then, we will have those results before the May, I'm sorry, the June 12th meeting. If there's a big change, then we would bring those results back to the council and say, we do not recommend having that discussion. If the, if the numbers have changed upwards, where it's more positive, then we would come back and show those numbers and then also have the discussion.
And I guess that was my question, that I was trying to ask earlier. Tonight, do we, are we somehow making a decision about a June 12th council item? And the answer really is yes. And that's what I was trying to ask earlier. We weren't able to properly communicate, but that's the question I was trying to ask. And that's what I'm not comfortable with, by the fact that we have three people here. I think I'm in the minority on that, but that's just...
But you're going to have an opportunity to hear what everyone says when the outreach is here on the 12th, and plus, people will be here.
Right, but we're basically saying tonight, with no public input, yeah, sorry, we do have public input. We have a statistic, statistically valid survey, but we don't have anyone here saying, commenting on our discussion.
They'll be here on June 12th before we make a substantive decision, if they care to be.
It's a, I think this is going to be a much, whether or not people are positive about it or negative, I just think it's going to be a bigger deal. And, and I assume part of the outreach involves meeting with the, working with the chamber and the businesses?
Correct.
Can I just?
Yeah, sorry.
I, no, please go. I was going to ask Dr. Bernard, because earlier I asked it, and I thought you said you weren't going to do the survey, someone else was now, I've heard. I think Kindon said that a subsequent survey or follow-up survey would be done by Dr. Bernard, the company, correct?
Yeah, I, I think you asked, I thought you asked me, so I'll be clear on what I was responding to.
Yeah.
I thought you asked me, what would the public outreach look like? And with respect to that, I don't, I don't do that.
Right, follow-up survey. What would the follow-up survey look like? I'll ask and answer.
That, that I can answer.
Okay.
Oh, is that all right? Yeah, so, if, if you chose to move forward with that tonight, and again, not trying to get ahead of you, I would use the, the learnings from this first survey to try to strengthen the ballot question, to be more reflective of the priorities of your community. I would ask them the, the ballot question, I would present a couple of educational statements, and I would be sure to test some oppositional statements to see if it could sustain, the measure could sustain opposition, and then I would re-ask the ballot question. So, sort of simulating a campaign within the context of the survey, and then I'd be able to provide the results to you, and I, I can assure you, there have been a number of clients, particularly in the last year or so, where I have told them, this is not your time.
Okay, and is this follow-up survey only the three hundred and seventy-four, or are you going to do a much larger? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, in terms of sample size?
Sample size.
You know, I, I don't know how to get more out of the number of people you have in the city. It would not necessarily be the same people. We would do a random sample again. There might be some people who have responded to the first one. There will be new people who will have been responded, but it will be reflective of your community. If there is a groundswell of opposition, you will see it in the results.
Okay, and then, just to follow up on the mayor's comments, and, and for you, in the cities that you dealt with, La Cañada, Flint Ridge, and Malibu, let's take those, for example, was the, was, was the process driven as we are discussing here, or was the city council heavily involved on a, a step-by-step basis?
No, well, it varies from city to city. Most cities, the council members, of course, want to know what's going on, because they're, they're, they're reflective of the community. That seems fair, but they kind of rely on staff and consultants who do this for a living to do this. It's certainly at your discretion as to how you choose, choose to do it. I would tell you that Malibu started later than you did, and never had a chance to do a follow-up survey. So, you should know, and their numbers were kind of close. La Cañada, Flint Ridge, numbers were also kind of close, but in that, from a descriptive point of view, it's not a judgmental description, the council members worked on their off-hours hard on ensuring that that, that, that measure had an opportunity for success. In some cities, there's nothing done, and sometimes that's reflective of the vote.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, I have one last question. Who would be going out to the HOAs and the community groups?
As Dr. Bernard just mentioned, that could be any and all of us. So, that could be staff, it could be staff and council together, it could be council on their own. So, it, it could be a combination of all of that, going out to these meetings.
And Ed made such a valid point, that a lot of the HOAs, some meet monthly, some meet quarterly. So, I'm just curious, like, at this point in the game, I, I want to know when we're going to get the preliminary results. It just seems so rushed.
The, the, of the next survey?
No, I'm less concerned, no offense, about the survey, about when people are actually in front of our residents, in front of the business, well, in front of the business community, but really in front of the residents who would be voting on this, to hear their feedback, when at these in-person meetings.
And, and as I mentioned, Mayor, that would be coming back to you in pieces, as we come back with different items of the budget, as we discuss sales tax in general. So, for example, some of the information we presented tonight was very minimal from what HDL, our HDL, our sales tax consultant has provided to staff and to the council. And so, I think it's only fair that the, the community also sees that information. So, what we anticipate is, over the next two months, time dedicated to each of these council meetings, at least to be coming back and discussing different components of this, whatever that might be, whether it's, again, a, a budget forecast, what it looks like in five years, it could be the, what we're seeing in, in, in the budget as we're talking in these meetings without having a budget study session, you know, what we're anticipating. It's looking at these priorities. How important are these priorities that we've identified to this point? Is it something that we want to put on pause and not do any additions to the budget?
No, I meant the outreach to the community. How, how are we going to get feedback on those meetings? Like, if someone ends up at Greater Millwood, or...
Yeah, we would be communicating that back to the, to the council. After any meeting, we'd communicate that back.
I'd like to be able to see the proposal from the consultants.
I can share that with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll share that with the council.
Yeah, I'm sure, not just me, but everyone would want to see that, to see what the strategy is and what groups are being targeted. Any other comments? Ed?
I think one of the ways of getting the feedback would be asking the presidents to feed back the information, take a survey of their own, although it's not a formal survey, but at least it gives some indication. It's better than none. I know I'm going to reach out. I've always liked, when you started that coffee with the mayor years ago, I thought that was original and, and really good.
I did one recently.
So, I'm going to do something like that, maybe at Gilson's, and, and bring people together, and if we get enough of that, the poll would be at least a couple hundred people. So, that's an indication.
Mayor, maybe as kind of a statement of assurance, we as staff don't want to put you in any uncomfortable situations. That's not our intent.
Of course.
And so, what we want to do is educate and inform. If the community is not ready to have this initiative go forward in November, we're not pushing that on the community. We will never do that.
No, no.
And so, we want to give that assurance. And again, it's most, more important that the five share a similar view in whether or not it's even going to make it to the ballot in November. That's the most important thing. We, we don't want to put you in a situation where you, with your constituents, you with your voter base, feel uncomfortable. We want you to feel comfortable through that process.
No, absolutely, and more of my concern was the fact that we didn't promote what this meeting was tonight.
Yeah.
Because this is a good conversation, and...
It is, but again, what we were trying to do is saying, fifty-something percent of your community, your voters, your likely voters, we wanted to share that information. If there's no intent to go forward, then we didn't want to expend any more energy or resources. We just wanted to know, do we move forward with this, based on what the statistically valid survey has indicated?
Right, and just moving forward, I think any item like this, we need to promote to the community, because even with the valid survey, it's important that people, that people would weigh in on this item. I know that, if they, I mean, we promote our agenda and everything, but that's where I'm at.
Got it.
Anyone else on the council? I don't have any speaker cards. Has that changed at all? No?
There are none.
Okay. I'm pulling for someone to talk, but no one. Okay, so...
So, Mayor, I do hear that I, at least that there's a direction at this point to move forward with educational outreach, community engagement, and additional surveying of the community, and then also direction that the council is informed, aware of the strategy and, and the educational component of this, and that there's a reporting back to the council.
And along with that, could we also get a, a timeline of what's going to occur?
Yes.
Please, I think I heard that.
Right. Okay, now we're going to move on to...
Could we get a break?
Oh, sure. Okay, break. We'll take a ten-minute break. Now, we are back, and we're going to turn to our special events calendar, and Erica Green, our Community Services Director, will present.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public. So, I'm here tonight to review the calendar of events for the Community Services Department. We will be looking at the year 2024, but I wanted to give some background before we did that. So, for tonight, the definition of special events, I wanted to go over that a little bit. A special event is an event that doesn't reoccur on a consistent basis. So, a one-time monsters movie in mayhem, paint night, et cetera. An annual special event is an annual reoccurring event, such as pumpkin festivals, summer concerts, Fourth of July, et cetera. So, I wanted to make that, make that clear. The special event sometimes gets mixed up with the, the term pop-up, so we want to use special event in this regard. So, our special events team, we have dedicated two folks to our special events team. One of those is here tonight. Juana Serna is our Recreation Coordinator, who coordinates all citywide special events, ribbon cuttings, grand openings, special events, and annual events. Her assistant, Vivian Epitasio, a Recreation Specialist, assists in coordination of all those events as well on a part-time basis. So, annual citywide events, as I mentioned, we have the Bunny Trail Egg Hunt, which we just had last weekend, which was amazing. Fourth of July Spectacular, which includes the Lakeside Fun Run, the Splash Party, and the Fireworks and Festival. We have the Summer Concert Series, which we hold for throughout the months of July and August. We have our Dive-In Movie Series at the Tennis and Swim Pool through July and August, the Pumpkin Festival in October, and a holiday event in December. And over twenty-three thousand five hundred people attend special events in our community annually. There we go. So, for 2023, the Community Services Department hosted various special events in the 2023 year of twenty-nine. These events included, but are not limited to, the Fourth of July, summer concerts, dive-in movies, Caribbean Bash, A Morning with Blippi, the Wild Walnut Park Groundbreaking Ceremony, and the Calabasas Community Center Roof Project Kickoff. So, we have the budget allocation listed here for the 2023 events, breaking it down by each event. The special events category, where the openings and ribbon cuttings is kind of our, our catch-all for certain events that we do that are not individualized in those other line items. So, for 2023, we had three hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars allocated to special events. This does not include our personnel. So, for 2023, here's the list of all the events we've done throughout the year. As you can see, we are working on events every month of the year and have coordinated twenty-nine out of fifty-two weeks. The thirty-five includes partner events that our team helps coordinate. So, those are in the italics, which are the men's pro tennis tournament, the Calabasas wine tasting from the chamber, microforce planting, et cetera. So, our team has a large part in that, coordinating logistics, documents, et cetera. So, for 2024, we have thirty-five events planned. A lot of those will include ribbon cuttings for the multiple park projects we have going on, and the budget is four hundred and five thousand four hundred and forty dollars, and the increase is due to the Community Center Events budget. So, for 2024, you can see there's forty-one events that the team will be working on and coordinating. We've added the planning timeframe to give you an idea of how long the events take to coordinate, and to let you know that most of the events that we're working on are overlapping at all times. So, our team is working on special events every week of the year. So, as you can see, there are some to be determined, and those are ribbon cutting ceremonies, resulting in four hundred and four thousand dollars, and four hundred and four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for our events for 2024. So, some new event ideas that we have, as you know, for the Fourth of July, despite our collaborative efforts with LVUSD, they have decided to not move forward with allowing the city to host the fireworks events at the, at Calabasas High School. So, for new event ideas, we have the Fourth of July Picnic and Barbecue with an estimated amount of four, forty-five thousand dollars to host that event. Food Truck Fridays with an estimate of about twenty thousand, Movies in the Park with the same twenty thousand, a five-k run at seventy-five thousand, a community art event at thirty thousand, and a music festival at a hundred thousand. So, these are just some ideas... So these are just some ideas that the team and I have come up with and, um, are willing to look at to implement. So what we would like from the council tonight is to get your feedback on the calendar of events, more specifically on the Fourth of July, and any other events that you would like to see and how we could reallocate those funds and resources to accomplish those. So that's the end of my presentation. So if you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Erica, and to all of your team. I'll start with Ed, if that's okay.
It's a lot to digest. I tried Monday, I tried Tuesday, looking at it, what would I do, what would I want? I'm not exactly sure where to start, so I'll just start, uh, new event ideas. Uh, I think everybody wants something on the Fourth of July. I mean, it's, it's a special day. It's, it's the middle of the year. It's the summertime. It's the first really big event. You know, I like that idea that July picnic and barbecue. I would hope it takes place in CPHA on the lake over there where we have the summer concerts. But, uh, that'll be determined, but I think a picnic and barbecue is great. The food truck sounds great. Movies in the park sounds great. You know, there isn't an area in here that, uh, people wouldn't enjoy. When I look at the cost between last year and this year and factor in three fifty-three versus four hundred and four, so same events, uh, I guess that's, uh, the cost of doing business in a new year.
That includes the Community Center events, so that's the additional funding to do events at the Community Center.
Okay. So I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to say I'm, I'm for all of that. I, I really am. It's, it's hard to say there isn't one in particular. When I look at the list on the 2024 special events, even the small ones, uh, that aren't well-attended, for example, 2023 anyway, you had Wild Walnut Groundbreaking is twenty-five hundred. There were only fifty people there. So is it worth it dollar for dollar? Yeah, I think it is because it represents something for the future and how the city feels about it. And then you have another one for, uh, five thousand dollars, which is, uh, Animal Fest. So, and that was held by three hundred people. So it's hard to tell. Sometimes, uh, little event because it's community-minded is the beginning of something that's building momentum, that's memories. I, I'm in favor of each one of these. I can't put a kibosh on any, so thank you.
You're welcome. I love your optimism. Who wants to go next? Okay, David?
Thank you, Erica. Uh, this is great. And again, congratulations on an amazing reopening of the Community Center, a new opening. Lots of questions, comments. You gave us the dollar amounts for the cost for each event. Do you have the net dollar amounts? For example, uh, Fourth of July, even though we're not doing it the same way, we sold tickets. Pumpkin Festival, the same thing. Um, so there is a net number, not just an outright cost. Do you have that as well?
We do have that. Um, bottom line with the events is we probably return half of that in revenue. So that's what it equaled out. We do have that information, though, if, if you would like those specifics, but I was just trying to put a summary here, but it's about half that we get back for revenue.
Just in evaluating what events to go forward with or what we might recommend. Obviously, there's a, a desire by different parts of the community for, for some of the smaller events and the larger events, obviously, attract a much wider, uh, segment of the community. So that's something. I mean, I'm excited for new events. I like even changing and upgrading older events that are great and could be, or excellent and could be better. I know we received a letter as a council about community-wide youth at rotating events such as music, art. Ciclovia was one that has been brought up at this council, uh, many times. I brought up, just throwing it out there, for a while now, utilize the outdoor amphitheater we have here. I know we have great summer concerts in the park, but with, and I know we've talked about it, I've talked with Michael and, and others when we were going to update the sound system in Founder's Hall to put some sound and lights, which wouldn't be prohibitive at all for the outdoor portion of the amphitheater. We have lots of, uh, local students who could present a one-act play. Uh, we have music from middle schools, high schools who could play there. We have, uh, a lot of, uh, local talent, local professionals who might want to do an acoustic set here. Uh, and it's just a, a small opportunity rather than a big venue, but you could get ninety or ninety-nine people, I think the max that can go there. Just the thought and it shouldn't, it would be off time when we're not doing summer concerts. And it wouldn't be that expensive to offer that to, to groups or we used to have a group in the city that was dying to run, to run it if they still would be active. July Fourth is a tremendous event for our city. We loved it. Unfortunately, as you said, it, we're not going forward and it's, it's, uh, it's not going to happen the same way. I am, this is me personally. I love the events in the day. I like the, the fun run and the tennis and swim open. To me, the fireworks in the night was incredible and a tremendous event. Not saying a barbecue or a picnic wouldn't be great. I just think people would prefer to see fireworks. They'll probably go out of the city. And, and if we do things, we do it in a tremendous way and you're, you and your staff do a great job. So I'm not, I'm gonna, maybe I'm a sole person who believes this. I'm not so excited about a picnic or barbecue. That's just me. Um, and, and for the community, I think they'll go elsewhere to see fireworks rather than sit here for a barbecue locally. I like the idea of a barbecue sometime in conjunction with a summer concert. That, that, that would be an option, or food trucks at a summer concert. Or, or something of that nature. Uh, Movies in the Park, are those the ones at De Enzo we're talking about?
They could be anywhere. Yeah, we, we were thinking of various locations.
I think that's great. I mean, you, the Film Festival does it, and I'm sure we could. Center Court at the Tennis Center is really nice. Uh, they, that was also fun. Anything for the community especially. In the coming year, we may not have too much, uh, other options to see movies in the city. The five K fun run, is that the one looking in September, if I read this right, with Something Yellow or something different?
We were just mentioning that as an option, but we actually have had meetings with Something Yellow. If that's, uh, the way the council would like us to go, we can partner and make that a larger event, um, for the city. If you so choose not to do something in the fourth, we could allocate those resources to, to partner further with Something Yellow to offer that five K.
Okay. And is there a possibility, I don't know if it's something we do, could do, that we could get a sponsor or sponsorship or partnership also with a company, let's say a running company, ASICS or whoever it might be?
Yeah, and I, I think they're...
To defray costs?
Yes, I think Something Yellow's already have worked on that, have sponsors of their own, so, but yes, definitely.
And I'm definitely for a community art event. We used to have a wonderful art festival. I know it was a lot of work, but the community certainly and students, uh, and Mayor's Youth Council have asked about that as well. And, um, music festivals, very expensive, but I, I love the idea. I, I went and supported some that were at King Gillette Ranch. They were amazing successes, uh, up there as well, so. That's it. That's it for comments. Thank you.
Peter?
First, a quick question. If we don't have fireworks, uh, because we don't have a venue to host event, we still have an eighty-eight thousand dollar line item in the 2024 budget for fireworks.
That's correct.
Is, I mean, I know that a barbecue was mentioned. I would have to agree with Councilmember Shapiro that, uh, if we don't have fireworks on the Fourth of July, I think the majority of our community would be going elsewhere to find those. Uh, so if we don't have a spectacular event, uh, my suggestion would be to take that eighty-eight thousand and allocate it elsewhere. Putting my budget hat on for a second, um, we are adding fifty thousand dollars to the special events. And I know you mentioned that that is a function of our Community Center, but I want to remind us all that our Community Center runs at a deficit. Uh, so it is a new expense that we didn't have before.
Correct.
Uh, so we really can't discount that.
Correct.
We have to understand that that's fifty thousand in, in lost revenue. As the additional hundred thousand that we would anticipate from the Community Center, um, falling below its, its expenses as well. Uh, and that's the cost of having a city and, and providing great services, and that's okay. But, uh, I think it's wrong in the staff report to say that there's no impact on the general fund for this item because there is. It's, it's an impact of fifty thousand. And perhaps, um, we do need to make sure that as we look at these things that, that, I myself, I want to add events. I miss the art festival. I love the idea of a Ciclovia. Um, these are all great ideas. I want to see them happen. Uh, but in addition to adding things, we're going to have to figure out what to subtract. And if we don't subtract, we're going to have to figure out where to get additional revenue. And that could come from the sales tax measure that we mentioned this evening, or it could come from, uh, you know, additional fees. It could come from additional cuts in services. So somehow this has to be balanced. I also heard you have a one and a half staff members that, you have a full-time and a part-time staff member that are strictly allocated towards events. Is that right?
That's correct.
And there's a lot of events for them to put on. Can they handle like twelve more events?
No.
No. Are they maxed out?
They're maxed out, yes.
So if we're adding more events, we're going to need more people.
We are, yes.
Which, again, is an, an additional expense that we don't have in there right now.
That's correct.
Have we looked at contracting that stuff out?
We have. Um, we've met with a few organizations. I, I believe, uh, Mayor Proton Crowe, you, you forwarded us the, the Valley, I can't remember their name. Very, Valley Cultural Foundation, who actually, they will come in and, and host the events. We pay them what we would, what's budgeted, and they would handle all of that. So we're, we're looking at that. They can do that for us. So they can take one of our existing events and do that. So we, we save some money there and, and either allocate it or, or save the city some money, allocate it elsewhere.
Okay, great. And then how about sponsorship?
Sponsorship, yes. We, we are looking to do that, especially now with the foundation that we have, the, the Calabasas Community Foundation. We are going to seek sponsorship for any events that, that we do, absolutely.
Okay. And I think our Chamber of Commerce and other business partners out there also might want that opportunity to, to get some advertising out of it.
Sure.
I know we're not a billboard. We're a city here, but, you know, having sponsorship for some of these events would allow us to do more with less, uh, you know, uh, expenses here. So I'd love to keep looking at outside-of-the-box solutions here.
Absolutely.
But those would be my comments. I think we're on the right track.
Thanks, Peter. James?
You answered my question about offsets. So everything here is offset by about half?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let me go through some of the ideas that were generated in my comments. One thing we had in two thousand and five, but it was only once, was a Fourth of July parade. And so, um, to me, that doesn't cost a whole lot. It's pretty much just blocking off the streets. And, um, I don't know why we didn't have it again. I don't actually recall why. But that would be an, an activity instead of fireworks if we had to do that. And I thought that went, went very well. Um, we also had, uh, not suggesting we necessarily bring it back, but we had like events in and around the Pumpkin Festival, like we had the Pumpkin Parade that went through Old Town and came out of Calabasas Road. That's gone. Our festival has been mentioned. I think that we could do that. I, I think that Boreen Moore put a lot of work into it. And perhaps we didn't need to put that much work into it if we're going to bring it back because that would require either a slew of volunteers or dedicated staff working for many months. So I think some form of that, occasionally she put on a smaller art show, and I think that would be fine as well to have a series of those. And as I recall, those did not lose money. They either broke even or, or...
Councilmember with Sajan, can you turn on your mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My microphone's off. I, I apologize. Okay. All right. So a couple other things. Um, on the Pumpkin Festival, I can, you know, I continue to feel that we need to have activities for older, uh, students, older minors or young adults. And the reason I say this is, you know, going to the other events around that fall time period, like the Hidden Hills Fiesta, the Reyes Adobe Days, they have very dedicated events for those aged people. I'm talking about, you know, fifteen to college through college, and they get very large turnout of those individuals. We don't have that as much as our Pumpkin Festival, and I'd like to start doing that, um, like they do it, uh, dedicated events. As far as a community center, um, a lot of the popular events, of course, we haven't had them in the last four years, but they were thriving when they were at the community center. They included things like the runs that they had, the fun, the fun run and the, you know, the Shamrock Shuffle and things like that. They had Halloween Carnival. They had outdoor shows, like they had a, um, like a dog show and a dog walk that was very large and regionally attended. I think Mari helped with that one over there when, when she was out there. And we had like, um, things like the flea market that were, that were, uh, every few months they'd do a community flea market, and it was very popular. They used to get about five hundred people coming through there. And they broke even because they charged for the booths and they had a food truck and everything. So those are some ideas. Now you've got a very large space inside there that you can utilize. And so you don't have to worry about inclement weather, and you don't have to worry about not being able to house as many people. I, I'm hoping that we're going to bring some of those events back, um, particularly at the community center. Do you have any? I know that we did the study, but do, what, what about some of the events I mentioned?
Yes, so, so Steph and I have been talking about that, and we have taken your, um, feedback into consideration. So one of the events that we're proposing to bring is the Food Truck Fridays, um, to the Community Center. Uh, there's also some funding to do events, such as you mentioned, council member, which we're looking in to do as well. So we also like to implement things like, uh, you know, an inclusive parent and me or family dance. There's, there's a lot of ideas we have, but there's also trading post ideas that I think go along with the flea market idea that we've heard from the Mayor's Youth Council. So there's a lot of ideas that we are definitely going to consider and implement at the Community Center. It's a great venue.
I'm partial to flea markets. I like, I like going to flea markets. And the one, the one at Pierce College is very successful.
Sure.
But I, but one of the outdoor spaces that we did, like, like as I said, with it, with the dog show and other, other things out there, you know, you could block off that street pretty easily because it's not heavily trafficked. And they were able to use a parking lot, and then they had the indoor facilities, the restrooms. Everything was available. And I thought that was a pretty good use of that space. So those are my suggestions.
Thank you. So first, I want to thank your staff for all the work that you guys have done. I always say, like, every event you plan, people just want more. So that's a compliment to you guys. My notes are kind of all over the place on this one, but one thing I want to bring up too is utilizing our Civic Center Plaza for events. It's such an amazing space and has such good energy, and people love being in this area. Also, even the City Hall parking lot. When you talk about like Food Truck Fridays, I love that, but I think we should rotate where things are in the community. Because on Friday night, someone from Mulwood might not want to go to the Community Center. And on Friday night, someone from, you know, Saratoga might not want to come. So just making things, um, fresh and new in different areas of the community.
Sure.
So I wanted to know too, for the Fourth of July, did we look at a drone or laser show?
We did. Um, we met with multiple drone companies. Uh, they're very expensive. So we usually pay about thirty-five thousand dollars for the fireworks. Just so to have something comparable with drones, you'd need about three hundred drones, which would be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a drone show. Um, we could go less, but the shows would be very basic. I don't think it would be that impressive to our community. So we did look at that. Um, lasers, we, we didn't really look into too much. We tried to go the drone route. But unfortunately, it was just out of our budget range.
Even if we raised the ticket price?
Yes, that, that would be almost three times.
Or had a space where you could accommodate more people?
The drones would need a lo, as much space as we would for fireworks. So we originally thought the tennis and swim, if we could do it at the, the lake, would work. The drones need a flat, large area to launch from all at once. So that limited our space where we can do it. Um, so the cost and that kind of prohibited us using the drones.
But if money were no object, do we have a space for the drones? No.
Not really, no.
Okay. Community, nothing, nowhere?
No, not for drones and the public to view.
And do, do any communities do like a laser show?
Uh, I think Agora does a, a laser show. Agora Hills.
Did we, we didn't, no, I'm seeing. It's not great?
I, I don't.
Okay. Let's see. Um, I agree with my colleagues. I just think that people won't, people will look... look for another alternative for the evening, which makes me so sad because it's like someone said, Calabasas, Fourth of July is the best day to be a resident in Calabasas. It really is so great. Like, I wish we had another alternative. I'm really sad to see that one event go.
We are too.
Yeah. Food Truck Fridays, I really like that, rotating the location though. Movies in the park, also rotating the location. The 5K fun run, registration fees, we would also be able to, we'd recover some of that cost because you pay when you join a race.
Yes.
Community art event, I like. I also like showcasing student art.
Yes.
I love the amphitheater. I think it's such an underutilized space, like having an open mic night. Back to the pumpkin festival, that was on my notes. Such a missed opportunity, not catering to older teens and young adults. I think about the Malibu Chili Cookoff. Everyone, all the students from here go there, and people will pay to go to the Chili Cookoff. And we could do something like that at night. I mean, I think it's such a huge festival in our community and that people age out of it. We could fix that. Let's see. I, yeah, I, I really like a run. Let's see. Flea Market, James, you're in company with all the teenagers. That's what they all want. They really want something like that here. They want to go thrifting in Calabasas. They mentioned it at the city hall at the parking lot. They had a whole vision that they shared with Juana and Erica. I like the music festival, but I think that we might even be able to do like smaller things with the amphitheater. I like the parade. I know people have asked about that in the past. I think that would be a good thing. I, someone brought it up. Just even, just bringing in some new things. And even if we have to cut, I would really like to hear from you guys. I mean, every event's successful, but if you look at the calendar of things that we do, and if you guys think there's things that we might not need anymore, we can look. I mean, I saw the paint night.
Mm-hmm.
Had 100 people.
Yes.
That's great. That was a really successful new thing. So...
Yes. And some of that were bound by the actual logistics. But now that we have the community center and larger space, we can even increase those numbers for those popular events.
And I have a question, like the neon skate night?
Mm-hmm.
Like what age is that geared towards?
All ages.
Because I think a lot of people think it's for like younger kids.
No, the last one we had, we had adults out there. Yeah.
But it may be like, we can, yeah, but if we can like promote, like share that, we can share it with the mayor's youth council. We can share it on social media. Like if we do have events that do target teens, we should let them know, like they're invited and welcome.
Of course.
And it's not just for little kids or adults. So...
Sure.
Those are my questions and comments. And Kendon?
Eric, I just wanted to maybe counsel, I think we need to push you a little bit more.
Great.
For some direction. And these are those tough decisions as policymakers. From what I'm hearing, and I just wanted to make sure that Erica's and her team have the proper direction. What I'm hearing for this year is because we don't have a venue for the fireworks, is to roll that money that would go towards the firework spectacular into another event, or there was a mention of making an expanding pumpkin festival. Is there a preference? Would there, would there be a preference to have a separate event? For example, a run? Or would that be expanding the pumpkin festival to have more of those teen carnival, other type of events?
Now you have an extra day because as I understand, the pumpkin festival is going to be one day again?
Yes.
So, you know, the other cities have multiple days, like Hidden Hills has three. I think Reyes Adobe's Days is three. So I think you could add an evening event, maybe the night before the pumpkin festival or something along that for older. I don't, I don't know. I'm just thinking that they're left out usually.
Right. The Chili Cookoff's an evening affair.
Whatever, right? It can be Chili Cookoff. I don't know.
A lot of people, like the younger kids go during the day, and the teenagers go at night.
They had a, you know, one, a couple of years they had, and this is in the distant past, where you bring a pumpkin dish of whatever, and they would have a contest to see which was the most popular dish. I don't know if we do that in this day and age necessarily, but that, you could do that.
We could, yes.
Some, I mean, I, I don't want to limit the possibilities.
Sure.
I think Reyes Adobe Days has a, has a concert or something the night before. So it's different things.
I think if, if we can get the council consensus on not having the fourth, the team and I could look at allocating where we would use that 88,000. We could spread it over multiple events, enhance the pumpkin festival, add smaller events to the amphitheater, things like of that nature. If the council's comfortable with that, we can definitely come up with that and let you know what that looks like.
I, I think that would be great. I'd like to see what you come up with. It's your expertise.
Sure.
I have wish lists.
Right. I have wish lists. Cyclovia is not on here, but like a run, I'd settle for a run. Like anything. And you saw that letter that was submitted.
Yeah. So would you be open to partnering with Something Yellow and, and enhancing that event to be with more food trucks and youth activities and teen activities while they handle more of the run portion? But we can definitely enhance that and...
Absolutely.
I would. Okay.
But not have the fourth means you're still going to have the summer splash party?
Yes. We would still have the fun run and the splash party.
Okay.
Yes.
And the pet show, if they're...
And the, oh, the pet show, yes. Definitely.
Had to bring that up.
You know, I think that would be a good idea, but also a good idea is not to expand the pumpkin festival for two days. And then next year after that, drop it back to one day and confuse the whole community. One year is one, then it's two, then it's one. So whatever we have with the pumpkin festival, if we do decide to do that, it's got to be for a while. It just can't go back and forth.
And we'd have to consider resources on that. The pumpkin festival exhausts all of our staff, our part time staff, our full time staff, and much of city hall staff, just for that one day. So we, we'd prefer not to expand that event and, and put our resources into other days when we have more staff to help us in that regard.
And is it, we can start commute, I mean, this is a public meeting, so obviously everyone can know that the Fourth of July is not going to happen as they know it. It's an important...
Yes.
Yeah. I'm, people book their travel schedule to be here for the Fourth of July. I started getting questions about it. So I said, we're discussing it tonight.
Yes, absolutely.
So can we, can you come back then at a future council meeting with some of the ideas?
Absolutely, yes.
Do you have enough then for you and your team at this point?
We do, yes.
Thank you, but all, everyone, so much.
Well, just before we leave though, my comments about having activities for older, like teens and young adults, that's not dependent on having the extra day. So if we don't have the extra day, hopefully we can have that at the pumpkin festival.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Yes, agree.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you fill out a card and after, name and city of residence.
Brian Cameron, Calabasas. As you're kicking around these ideas for events and how there's a kind of gap for the teens, what about a computer based program, computer based competition, where you select a piece of software and ask them to use that software to create something creative? And maybe you do different levels of, of software where different age groups? Or maybe even a TikTok creation of something? I, I don't know. I'm just spitballing here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you, Erica. Now we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the annual progress report for the 2020, for 2023 regarding the City of Calabasas general plan, 2021 to 2029 housing element. Jaclyn will present the item.
Bless you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. This is an update to the city's progress regarding the 2021 to 2029 housing element, specifically in regards to the 2023 calendar year reporting period. Just as a little bit of background, the housing element is a mandatory element within the city's general plan, which is comprised of 11 elements in total. The housing element addresses the city's needs towards specific housing criteria and meeting regional housing needs. It is adopted on an eight year cycle. Currently, we're within the sixth cycle of the housing element, which runs from 2021 to 2029, and was adopted by the city council in 2021. So the annual report is prepared on forms that are provided by HCD and using definitions that were adopted by HCD. This table, which is table A2 within the report, which is attachment annual packets, summarizes residential entitlement activity for the 2023 calendar year. And entitlement activity refers specifically to planning approvals that have been issued. It's not necessarily units that have been constructed or building permits that have been issued. It's just projects that have received a planning approval. And I also want to clarify on the, on this left hand column here, the income category. Those income limits are defined by the state. And the state also, within their table, separates out by units that are deed restricted versus non-deed restricted. So non-deed restricted units would be, for example, self-reported ADUs that are be, to be rented out at an affordable rate. So the state's table does differentiate between those two. So we have a total of four units that were entitled at a very low income level in 2023, 12 units that were entitled at a low income level, one unit at a moderate income level, and 120, 122 units at an above moderate income level. So that is a total of 139 units that were entitled in 2023. I do want to mention that the majority of these units were from the Caruso project located in the Common Shopping Center, which was approved by the city council in December 2023. I believe that was 117 units altogether. This next table also comes from table A2 within each CD's report, and this data looks at building activity. So this is specifically units that were issued building permits for construction in 2023. So we have a total of three units in the very low income category, zero units at the low income category, four units at moderate, 12 units at above moderate, for a total of 15 units that were issued permits for construction in 2023. So that was just last year. And this bottom table looks at the cumulative summary for this cycle so far, which again runs from 2021 to 2029. So looking at the cumulative cycle, we have three units in total for very low income, zero for low, eight for moderate, 14 for above moderate, for a total of 25 units that were permitted from 2021 to 2029. So that is 7% of our required reina so far. And for the remaining number of units, we have 129 in the very low income category, 71 in the low income category, 62 in the moderate category, 67 in the above moderate category, for 329 units remaining. I do want to mention on this slide that on the previous slide I showed you, we had 139 units that were entitled. So those units aren't counted yet in this table until building permits are actually pulled for those units. So likely when building permits are issued, we'll have made greater progress towards our reina requirement in the next year of the cycle. This is our housing inventory site map. And this reina cycle from 2021 to 2029 required the city to plan for 354 new housing units. This map shows where we've planned for those units to be located. So we have 12 sites in total that we've planned for, six of which are located on the east side of the city, six are located on the west side of the city. So starting on the east side, we have number one is the Razznick Office Building Site. Then we have number four, which is the Old Town Vacant Lot. Number 12 is Craftsman's Corner. Number 11 is the Common Shopping Center. Number three is the private parking lot. And number seven is the downtown offices on Calabasas Road. On the west side of the city, we have number five, the Los Virginas Shopping Center. Number 10, the Mura Road Office Buildings. Number nine, the Agora Road Office Buildings. Number six, the church site on Los Virginas Road. Number two is the Rancho Pet Kennel Site. And then number eight is the Avalon Apartment Complex. And we do have a few updates for some of those sites during the 2023 reporting period. So for site number three, which is the private parking lot that's adjacent to city hall, we do have an active project application that's in for that property. It is still in the incomplete stage at this time, but that project is currently in process. Number, site number nine, the Agora Road Office Complex. Staff has received a few inquiries from individuals looking to purchase the property and potentially redevelop it, but we do not have a update on a potential project at this time. For site number 11, which is the Common Shopping Center, a project for 119 total units was approved by city council in December of 2023. And lastly, for site number 12, Craftsman's Corner, there is an annexation effort still underway. Staff continues to field inquiries regarding that site. We do have a few additional updates for projects that are not listed on this inventory. We do have two new subdivisions that are currently submitted off of Mulhall and Highway. I believe the first one is a 10 unit project and the other one is an 18 unit project. And we also have a pre-application review submitted for a 150 unit affordable housing project located off of Calabasas Road. I just want to mention that that is only a pre-application review, so we've received no formal application for that at this time. This next slide, we have an update for affordable housing. We currently have three affordable properties in Calabasas. We have Avanti, which is deed restricted for very low income. It is set to expire in 2046. We have a total of eight units there. Six of them are one bedroom and two of them are two bedroom units. Just to mention the maximum rental rates and income levels, for a one bedroom, very low income, the maximum rent is 1,135. The maximum income level is $50,450. For a two bedroom unit, the max rent is $1,277 and the maximum income is $56,750. Canyon Creek is a entirely senior development where all 75 units are designated for very low income, and that is set to expire in 2066. Lastly, Paxton is deed restricted at very low income as well, set to expire in 2048. There are four units at Paxton. They're all one bedroom. The maximum rent there is $1,135 and the max income is $50,450. And so that is a total of 87 designated affordable units in the Moving on to conclusions and recommendation, the housing element progress report is informational only, requiring discussion at a public meeting. There is no action necessary on the part of the city council. Staff recommends that the council take public comment and then receive and file this report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jaclyn. That was a really good report. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
I have questions.
And I think I'll start with James.
So when I was reading this before, I, I don't understand what this entry means under unit category two to four. What does that mean?
What page?
It's on this spreadsheet, the Excel document, because it says ADU, other, other things. But then there's a couple entries that say two to four. What does that mean?
Sure. So these are the options that are set on HCD's table, so I can't change what these options are. But two to four is essentially for two to four new housing units. So for example, most of these are a single family home plus an ADU. So they don't fall into the just single family residence or just ADU category. It's a two unit housing development. So some of them are either one new single family residence plus one new ADU. But I believe we have some other ones on this list where it's an existing single family residence, and they're proposing one ADU and a JADU. So that would also fall into the two unit category instead of just the ADU or single family residence category.
Well, my concern was, because I had asked staff to track any SB nine or 10, SB 10, I guess. So none of these are that. Okay.
Correct. No SB 10.
Okay.
Nor any SB nine applications as well?
Yeah, that would, there was certain other requirements that weren't met. So I just want to move on to two things you said. 150 unit, I guess, multifamily dwelling, residential development along Calabasas Road. Is that in the parking lot adjacent to our parking lot? Where, where is that? I, I wouldn't even know where that is.
I can answer that question. So it's on Calabasas Road adjacent to the Cadillac dealership. So there was a pre-application that was submitted, and that property is zoned, split zone, commercial retail, and also open space. And so a pre-application was filed. And so a pre-application was filed. At this stage, a pre-application only solicits feedback from the department. It's, there's no decision that's actually made on that, on that submittal.
But is it zoned for housing at all?
It, our zoning code does not permit housing on the, on the commercial retail zone property. However, there are exemptions under state law, so...
Let me add to that. The applicant claimed exemption from our zoning under various provisions of state law. We do not agree at this stage that they are eligible for those exemptions. So we responded by letter that their application, if they were to move forward, would require an application to change the zoning and change the general plan. We have not heard back from them after we sent that letter.
Is that the property that was purchased by Weston?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm getting my bearings right on it. Okay. Then the Mahaland Highway projects, where are those?
I believe, looking at this map, if you can see my cursor, one of them, I think, is covered by where this legend is right here. I believe it's...
Well, I mean, give me an idea of where it is geographically.
Maybe I'll jump in. One of them, if you, let's travel south on Mahaland from Viewpoint. Right? So if you just travel from Viewpoint, you haven't gone 500 yards, and one of the properties is on your left, Mobile Home Park on your right.
Ah, okay. I know where that is.
Formerly Mahine, right. You carry on up the, what cyclists call Cardiac Hill, and then down Mahaland, there's a vacant property that is near the border of the city, and it's on your right. It actually then crosses Dry Canyon Coal Creek. The lot actually includes both sides. It's long and narrow.
The road bisects the lot.
So if these projects are built, and they're multi-unit areas, doesn't that reduce any kind of our number requirement?
So if those projects go through the process and are approved and are built, then yes, they'll count down against our RENA requirements if, in whatever income categories, if any of them come through with affordability.
Okay.
Also, just to be clear, these were subdivisions for single-family homes, not multifamily?
Yes, I understood that to be the case. My only comment then, because those are my questions, is I'm not consistent with my belief, which I'm not going to get into great detail tonight, but consistent with my belief that we're not bound any longer by the housing element. I'm not going to vote to receive and file this, but it's not a reflection on the staff or anything. It's more a reflection on the state's lack of authority here.
Thank you. That's why I went to you first. Peter?
Thank you for the report. Just a couple of questions. The West Village isn't on here. That's not even on the first table with the entitled units. Is that because of their current plan to change?
Well...
Not yet.
Yeah.
I'll jump in on that one. So as the council knows, with the approval of the settlement agreement and the council's action on January 4th to approve the environmental impact report, the West Village project is moving forward at either 180 or 76 or fewer. They haven't yet applied for the single-family home version, thus it's not yet entitled. We are expecting them to submit in the next several months, and then to be considered by the council in the next several months following, at some version of a single-family development in the 70-something unit range.
Okay, but it's currently entitled multifamily, is it not?
They have indicated that they're going to come in and modify that, so we didn't get listed as entitled.
Okay, so that's why they're not listed?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will be reflected likely in the 2024 report?
Oh, that's what we expect, for sure. Okay.
And sorry, just to finish, one last thing about it. That site's not part of the sixth RENA inventory either. So we wouldn't list it for that reason either.
So on the slide here in front of us, number nine, the Agora Road, is that not the Calabasas Tech Center, or is that the Jack-in-the-Box Plaza?
It is a portion of the Calabasas Tech Center. So the tech center is maybe 25 acres, and 20 of those acres are the bulk of the tech center, and there's a smaller portion that is a separate parcel. So it's that separate parcel that's in the inventory, not the full tech center.
All right, just where the number nine is on the map, it doesn't seem to be in the right spot.
It's more clearly defined in the actual housing element.
Okay, great. The affordable housing overlay, has anyone taken advantage of that at this point?
The one application that's currently pending is requesting the affordable housing overlay, the one on the private parking lot next to City Hall.
Okay. And then last question, ADUs. We know a number of ADUs have been built. Is there any follow-up or enforcement of an ADU being used as an ADU? Or do we just, how does that, how does that get addressed?
If an ADU is rented, they're required to register it under our rental inspection, our rental registration ordinance, and so we'll know that. But there's no hard requirement that we, if they don't register it and they run it as a, as a family unit or an in-law unit or something, we still get to count it as an ADU under the very, under the approval, and we don't have to follow up there.
I do want to clarify, our rental registration requirement does not capture ADUs. You have to rent at least five or more units.
Oh, that's right, yes.
To do that. However, the concern with ADUs is that they're rented as short-term rentals, and we do actively monitor short-term rentals. In fact, we've, we're engaging with a company that does very robust monitoring of pretty much all rental, short-term rental websites, to make sure that we don't have that problem in the city.
Okay, but I think the other concern with ADUs is that sometimes an applicant will propose an ADU in order to get that additional square footage on the property, and it might be questionable according to the plans whether they really intend to use it for an ADU or a game room. And whether that happens or not, we just take the credit for the ADU and our RENA numbers and move on?
From a purely in use perspective, that's all we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. Thank you, Jaclyn, for the report, and thank you, Michael, for a couple of years ago being out in public and helping represent the city, I think, with regard to item number nine that came, you met that day, if I recall. Just looking at this, this particular map that's up now on our agenda, on our packet, number one, the Raznick Office Building, in spite of the fact that that has, that project was stopped and turned back into office buildings, we still get the potential for units on that?
We don't get the potential for units. This was identified in our housing element, and it was accepted as demonstrating that we can accommodate the capacity. At this point in time, we haven't actually taken credit of the units because a building permit has not been issued.
And the one clarification if I could, we still count the potential in our, in our, potential to meet our RENA count, but they don't count as entitled because they pulled it back.
Right, that's what I was asking. They do count as potential.
Right.
Okay. And then if I read the math correctly, we're talking about being a shortfall, at least on this projection, for low and very low units of 200, less 16 entitled, which about 184 shortfall for our city at this point, correct?
That is correct, and I will mention what you've seen in both of these tables so far. Other than the Caruso project, which I mentioned, the majority of our very low and low-income units are coming from ADUs. I mentioned the state requires us to separate between deed-restricted or non-deed-restricted. So aside from the Commons Project, we have mostly non-deed-restricted ADUs as our very low and low-income units.
Got it. And we need another, my personal opinion, there are Canyon Creek in the city to help us in this regard. Do we have a plan at this point, or some forward-thinking thoughts of how to reach the numbers, even close to the numbers, 184 units that are low and very low income that we do not have in the city at this point?
The primary plan that was at least outlined in the housing element was to take advantage of the affordable housing overlay. In addition to that, the other options that we have continued to pursue is various grants that could be available, primarily to assist a developer to build another Canyon Creek type of project. The biggest barrier is the cost of land. So we have heard if the city can acquire a piece of land and then effectively offer that at no cost to a developer, then that combined with additional state and federal grants, they could likely make a project work. But just being able to buy a property and sinking that cost is definitely a barrier. But we continue to pursue any way that we can to get through that.
And I'll add that the annexation, Craftsman's Corner, is a key component for being able to make more progress, because there's a really excellent opportunity there. We've received a lot of inquiries. Just have to get it in the city first.
And that's for low and affordable units I'm asking, though, specifically, Tom?
Well, they have to include some, because we have an inclusionary housing ordinance and the density bonus opportunities they would have. We'd certainly get a reasonable number with market rate, of course.
One, one thing to take, one thing to consider, if the Craftsman's Corner annexation goes through, we could also look at adding the AHO to some of those sites. Currently, just because of how things were structured, HCD would not let us add the AHO to the Craftsman's Corner locations, but that's an option as well.
Okay. And when you referred to the city potentially obtaining a property, and then grants and developer going forward with something in the city similar to Canyon Creek or some type of low and very low-income units that are restricted for certain, certain groups, whatever is legal, were you, at that point, considering the city would maintain ownership of the land, but the project would be for the benefit of the city and residents?
Matt might have more experience with it, but it could be a very low annual lease rate.
There's three or four ways to structure those kinds of deals. One is you transfer the land over with a covenant, requiring permanent affordability. Others, we keep the land and do a 99-year lease. Would it come along? We would look at the opportunities and what would work for a project.
Okay. I urge us to look for those types of projects and anything more going forward, but thank you very much. Great report.
Thank you. Ed?
Thank you for the report. As always, thorough and complete. If you could bring the Mac back, a lot of my questions have been answered. Questions that I wasn't going to ask that were answered, asked and answered for me anyway. And I'd like to know just where two properties are, just to be on the safe side. Number five, which is the Los Virginas Shopping Center. So is that the other side of Los Virginas, down toward the trails over there, where Thousand Oaks Boulevard is?
Yes, it's where Santa Fe Cafe is located. That property is zoned for mixed-use development.
Is that the intention now, or that's just...
That actually has been in our zoning since 2008.
Okay. And the other is the...
Church.
I think I've passed by that church, but I'm not, I've never really thought about it as being a potential.
Yeah, we...
The church is over by A-Rite?
On Los Virginas Road, yeah. We identified that primarily because there's a big portion of the back of that property that is just open grass, vacant.
Yeah, interesting. The creek's back there, so probably as big as the ball field is for A-Rite, it's probably the same-sized property.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a pretty decent size, and church properties have also been known to provide opportunities for affordable housing development.
There are also some state provisions specific to institutions being able to provide housing on their properties, so it made sense to include it, and HCD approved that as well. It was an easy one.
I mean, tonight's not a conversation for annexation, but boy, that would be a parachute for us, a big white parachute. I see so much happening in that once we hopefully obtain that property and develop it. Thank you for answering all my questions.
And I just have one simple question. All my questions have been asked and answered. The map that's up there right now that lists all of the properties, just to clarify, if an applicant comes in for housing on this site, that's an allowed use for all of these listed sites.
From a zoning perspective, anything on that, on this map, is an allowed use from a housing standpoint. And there are other properties within the city, within the mixed-use zone, that are also in allowed use. This map only reflects what we committed to HCD so that we could show that there's enough sites already zoned to accommodate additional housing.
And I'll note, on each of those sites, housing is an allowed use, 20 units an acre density, subject, of course, to the density bonus laws and the affordable housing overlay for a portion of those sites as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
It's 24, I'm sorry, it's 24 units.
Did I say 20?
Yeah.
Oh, 24, yes.
Sorry.
And this is just a receive-and-file item, so nothing more from us? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to turn to the check register for the period of March 2nd through 15th, 2024. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Are there any task force reports? Peter?
Yes, I just want to report that last Thursday, I was in Burbank for the League of California Cities Committees, and attended the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee. We talked about a lot of the bills that are in front of the California State Legislature right now. Way too many to cover tonight, so I'll try to get something down in writing and share it with you guys. I'm actually waiting for the handouts from the league themselves, because they probably have better notes than I have. But once I have them, I will share.
Great, thank you. David?
Sure. Today, we had, as mentioned earlier, we had our first budget committee meeting of many to come, and it was very good, very positive. Yesterday, the mayor and I met with the presidents of the PFC, PTA, and PTSAs. Hopefully, I got that right. And it was a very good meeting as well pertaining to all the schools. Attended Valley Economic Alliance Board meeting, and I attended a number of SCAG meetings. Next week, I'll be involved with the Scholarship Committee, which appoints, provides scholarships. And registration is open for the Regional Council and General Assembly, May 1st to 3rd in Palm Desert. It closes soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
Thank you. I just have one report. Economic Development, we're going to be meeting tomorrow. I'm looking forward to it, discuss and analyze commercial R&amp;D zones to include life sciences and biotech, among other subjects. So we'll be reporting on that at our next council meeting.
James?
No, nothing, thank you.
Okay, I'll add, last Monday with, through Supervisor Horvath, I attended a luncheon for, it was through the county commission on women, and they each, Supervisor old district gave a Woman of the Year. For the third district, it was Kim Lamori, and I was joined with a representative from each of the COG cities, so Malibu, Westlake, Hidden Hills, and Calabasas. Also met a new council member from Beverly Hills and San Fernando. So there were representatives from each area of our supervisor's district. Then Ed mentioned, we went to the opening of a new academy for, let's see, I wanted, what J-COT is, but it's the juvenile, hold on, I should have pulled it up. But through the, it's basically, Ed described it already, but it is an... LA County Training Fire Camp, and it's an amazing opportunity for people that have been, served their time in prison, have previously been in the foster care system, and this is an opportunity for them to get all the supportive services they need and to become firefighters. And what a better place for them to be than in the Santa Monica Mountains. We heard them speak. We heard LA County Fire Captain Maroney speak, and it was, I thought, just a wonderful event, and I've asked for more opportunities for our city to be involved, to go there, maybe for an open house for our residents, just to see the great work that's being done there. Regarding the school liaison meeting that David and I had, the check presentation is going to be coming to the council in May, an opportunity for the entire council to be a part of the check presentation. We're going to notify all the PFCs on what council meeting they're coming from. So the meeting yesterday was just our annual meeting as the school site liaisons, but the check presentation is going to be an opportunity for all of us to be a part, and a good opportunity for the public to see that as well. And I think that's it for now. Kendon, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, just two items. Previously mentioned was the community center opening. Thank you all for attending. You did great in Cornhole, and we'll practice further for other competitions later on. Arbor Day, also thank you to Public Works for putting that on and for your attendance at that event. And also, the library held a family fun fair that same day, and that was also well-attended. Big thank you to the library staff for organizing that, and especially the activities for a much younger crowd. It was fun to see just families and little kids at the, at the event, enjoying that. And so many volunteers, teen volunteers, and then our... so many volunteers, teen volunteers, and then our friends of the library also participating that night. Second announcement, council, as you're aware, and just to share this with the community, we have an announcement that our city clerk has accepted a position and will be joining a wonderful organization, but also meaning a retirement from us. And we will be celebrating Mari at our next council meeting on April tenth. Just wanted you to be aware of that. Personally, I've enjoyed working with Mari over the last three years. She is exceptional, and, and I don't know if I can say more than just exceptional on that, but we, we will honor her over these next few weeks, and just wanted the, the council, or the council and the community to be aware of that.
I don't know how to follow that. We're going to save all of our comments, but so sad for Mari moving on, but you'll hear more from all of us, probably every day up until then as well. So really, there's no words. He's been such an amazing contribution to the organization. So if there are not any, are, oh, are there any requests for future agenda information items?
Can you remind me, when is the airport thing coming back?
Kendon?
I don't know.
I know it was supposed to come back, and then I didn't see it, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, so Michael McConville is working on that. I don't know if we've set a date, whether that's in April twenty-fourth is the first meeting in May. Let me check with him on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding future agenda items? Okay, then we will adjourn to a regular meeting scheduled on Wednesday, April tenth at seven PM. I hope everyone who celebrates has a wonderful Easter.